That being said, our second candidate is Martin Jodrap, and he is here in person. Martin, why don't you come up?
The timer's already set. Okay, thanks for coming, and you can launch with your opening statement. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time to meet with me today. I'm a Palo Alto resident, and I have purchased my first home here in 2009, and I have lived in Palo Alto ever since, with only one interruption which has just concluded last month. And I hardly ever leave Palo Alto. I work in Palo Alto. I'm a member of the Rinconado Pool. I'm a member of Palo Alto Libraries. My daughter attends Palo Alto Public School. I'm a Palo Alton. And I'm also the founder of Mindframe Inc., a design-build firm. And my work focuses on the design and construction of single-family homes in Palo Alto primarily. I do not have a degree in architecture, and I'm not a licensed architect. But all I do for my living is designing buildings and landscapes. And I just want to emphasize that. I'm not a real estate developer. I'm not a project manager. I'm not a real estate agent. I'm not an investor. I'm a designer of buildings. And since 2016, I have applied for over twenty building permits in Palo Alto, and I have gone through the individual review process six times. And all the architectural drawings for these permits bear my own signature. I do, I draw the plans. I drew the architectural details. I create electrical and plumbing plans. I produce the landscaping plans myself. And while I focus on single-family homes these days primarily, I have also some experience with commercial work. I designed dormitory buildings for a private school in Portola Valley. So over the past years, I have been following many of the major development projects in Palo Alto, and I have regularly reviewed the plans. I have regularly read the findings by the development staff and studied the discussion that was happening in the ARB meetings. And I find that contextual design criteria and objective design standards, written in the municipal code, help projects clear a certain minimum bar in terms of architectural quality. Yet, we end up with some projects that stay at that minimum bar. And these also tend to be the projects that take the longest time to approve. And I believe that one of the reasons contributing to this is that developers struggle to interpret some of the wording of especially the contextual design criteria. For example, the contextual design criteria for facade design calls for human-scale detail, articulation, and craftsmanship. But what does the term craftsmanship mean? I will not answer this question here, but I can say that whatever craftsmanship's craftsmanship means, it means something different in Palo Alto than it means in any other town. And it is defined by the history of this city and the wonderful architects who have built this city. You know, it's the Ekoia wood slats on Roko Sushi. It's the landscape wall in the Mercedes-Benz dealership dealership. It's the soffit in the hub in the Stanford Research Park. So this is one of the questions I would like to tackle during my tenure on the Architectural Review Board. How can we better document what good architecture looks like in Palo Alto? And how can we provide more guidance to architects to enable them to create more attractive spaces and accelerate the approval process and possibly reduce the workload of the planning staff? Another area where the Architectural Review Board is active is area plans. Fresh on the agenda is the downtown housing plan. It is an incredible opportunity to add housing in a way that benefits existing businesses while having limited impact on the traditional single-family residential areas. To realize the full potential of its benefits, the development guidelines for this area need to address a myriad of very critical elements. Starting from questions around how to leverage the proximity to Caltrain to minimize vehicular traffic, how do we create facilities such as childcare, healthcare? How do we ensure sufficient green space for the new residents? Growing residents in downtown will necessarily change the streetscape. But if we do it right, it will still be aesthetically appealing and uniquely Palo Alto. To wrap up, I'm seeking to be appointed to the Architectural Review Board as a resident of Palo Alto, who is not a licensed architect, but who is passionate about this city and has enough knowledge in the field of architecture to be a highly effective member of the board. I'm confident that those members of the ARB, who are licensed architects, will enjoy working with me because I respect them deeply for their unique educational expertise, and I know when and how to contribute the skills of my own. Thank you.
Okay, we'll ask a few questions. I'm going to just kick off with something that you mentioned that I had noted in my notes, which is I'm very intrigued that you say we should provide proactive guidance to developers on what is expected and desired from new projects. So what I hope is a challenging question is, how can you get ARB to decide on that, let alone get acceptance from the council and the city?
A lot of these guidelines are already written in the municipal code. We have the objective design guidelines. We have the contextual criteria. And the Architectural Board already started, you know, down this path, you know, not in an explicit way. We have the design awards, like, you know, in a couple of days, you know, five projects will be awarded for in excellent aesthetic. And, and those projects already contain many of the elements that make Palo Alto a special place. However, if you try to look for past recipients of this award on the internet, it's very, very hard to find. You know, this award has been given out for, I believe, twenty years. But if you look for past recipients, you have to look really, really hard. So if there's an architect who is not from Palo Alto and is trying to submit a project in Palo Alto, and he wants to know what are the kinds of projects that the Architectural Review Board or the City Council will like, you know, those would obviously be the recipients of the award. He's going to have a really hard time finding them.
Okay.
And I think the Architectural Review Board can do more to publicize the reasons for their decisions and for their recommendations.
Okay, we only have two more minutes. Questions from the dais? In that case, oh, sorry. It's you and Keith at the same time.
Okay, thanks. And so can you talk a little bit more on what you maybe have seen in commercial projects that you think are particularly well-suited for the city? Maybe an example or, or, and/or one that you think is not well-suited, or that one that's on the horizon that's being proposed?
We only have a minute left, so.
One of the recent projects that I like, and that is also receiving the award, is the new Mercedes-Benz dealership. I like the fact how it's using reclaimed wood. I like that it has a landscape wall. I like the fact that it's providing bicycle access through the property. I know it was a very challenging situation for, you know, trees because of the, of the power line, but they are still planting a large number of new trees. And I think that development is a good example where the architect tried to reconcile, you know, guidelines given by an external party Mercedes and the realities of Palo Alto and the balance.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure you can get a question in in ten seconds, so. All right, thank you very much for, for applying.
Thank you.
Okay, our next candidate is Ashutosh Gupta on Zoom. Hello, Ashutosh. You could go ahead and unmute yourself. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Hi, everyone.
Oh, and go ahead and turn on your video, please. All right, perfect. Thank you.
All right, awesome. So hi, I'm Ashutosh. I'm an architect. I have my own design-build company, Warhopes, and we mostly work on residential architecture, single-family homes. I have been in tech as well as in architecture. I have experience in both of them and pretty much share my experiences from, from each other and try to get the best solutions. And I am also lead AP, worked on sustainable designs. And yeah, so that's, that's my background.
Okay, that completes your opening statement. We can go to the, to the dais. Councilmember, you can light them up if you want to ask a question. Councilmember Lithgow Haines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gupta, thank you for applying. I appreciate your interest in shaping spaces indoors and outdoors to foster human connection. And I wonder if you're familiar with our efforts to really bring a new neighborhood almost to San Antonio Road corridor right now that has a lot of commercial busy traffic where we envision a lot of multifamily homes could go, and therefore humans needing to interact at a human scale safely and enjoyably to get where they need to go, to enjoy recreation, get to school, and so on. I wonder if you could share your thoughts as to how we might proactively foster those new spaces, sorry, ensure that those new spaces are fostering both, you know, indoor and outdoor human connection in ways you deem meaningful.
So overall, for Mardi Stouret, I am thinking of, we are making Mardi Stouret high-rise buildings over there. And one of the things is the stark contrast from those buildings with the, with the nearby landscape. And one of the things we can scale those things down is to gradually build them up, maybe have some, some spaces which are more indoor and outdoor, or some shades, or slowly build, gradually build it up so that from the human vision or the scale, you don't see the massing around. I mean, there are a lot of ways to reduce the massing, maybe accentuate more horizontality, maybe with structures like pergola, which are neither enclosed nor open, but give some kind of a sense of from, from light to dark, so gives some kind of a transition. Have those kind of structures, but essentially, there should be multiple levels of, of interaction, and not just a blank, you open the door and you are inside a building complex. Also, humans need to interact with each other, so giving them safe spaces. People, where people can sit down, can talk to each other, having those casual conversations, maybe talk to the neighbors during the walking the dog. Those, those casual interactions also go a long way, building neighborhoods. So I think those kind of spaces would be great as well. Palo Alto already has a lot of tree-lined streets, and those are great. Also, Bay Area climate, I think, has, it's a unique climate in itself. It's, it's either too hot or too cold. And I think we should use that more. It's more, you can enjoy outdoors more in this climate if you have a way to have both shade as well as outdoor, where you can have sun as well as shade, or some, some kind of a play between sun and shade. Because it, it does, it doesn't get very hot in, in the day, and even if it does during the evenings and mornings, it's again very pleasant. So I, I think using that climate would be, would be nice. So those are some of the thoughts that come to my mind.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yeah, you have a lot of experience building houses. What's your philosophy and how does that relate to commercial real estate?
In terms of houses, I like more modern, clean lines architecture. But again, as I work with homeowners, it's not just me. It's also how the homeowner perceive their homes to be. So it's a mix of my personality and their personality. So even if we go with something traditional, there would be, you would find some kind of a modern hint to it. I've, I've worked on, I've made French attos, meditated, a lot, a lot of different kinds of styles. And those are basically reflective of my, my style and as well as what the homeowners want. But I can see a trend towards home, what people want, and the shift, and the shift of the trends over the last ten years, and especially in the last few years after, after the Corona, where people, a lot of people started working from home and what they wanted their home to be. So I've seen those shifts of some of the things, what they wanted inside in the home, like, things like they need to store more, they, maybe like a walk-in pantry, so small things. But these are mostly on residential scale, single-family homes. People want more backyards, bigger backyards. There's also a shift where a backyard is more preferred than a front yard now.
And so how does this relate to commercial real estate and, you know, for example, retail or offices?
Right, so in retail and offices, I, I, I think overall, it's a great question. I think people still work, there are still people that are working from home and going to office. So I think they want some kind of a flexibility in that case, and it might, it might change some of the offices, the way it works, with more casual spaces, some entertainment spaces as well, also collaborative spaces. We also saw the shift of offices from, from cubicles to open offices, and now you just come in and take any, any space in the offices. But those are mostly, I think, towards interior, interior planning for the offices. In general, I would think overall, from the exterior facades of the offices or the planning of the offices, I would think more, more open spaces would be nice, more terraces would be nice. But I don't have a lot of experience working in commercial offices. I have, I've designed a few, but I haven't, I don't have a lot of experience working in those. But more of as a user, I can talk more about those offices. But as far as residential goes, condos or apartment buildings, I think as people are staying more in homes, those things are more related to residential, single-family homes, and they still need more open spaces, so balconies, terraces, community gardens, those things.
Okay.
I still.
I don't want to take all the time. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Others? No? Okay, then if you have a closing statement, you are welcome to give it.
I've worked in Palo Alto. Oh, sorry, was it?
Go ahead. The video is shifting a little bit, but go ahead.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I was saying. Oh, okay. I've worked in Palo Alto, still have a lot of single-family homes that I've been designing. And overall, the, the city is, it's a tech hub, but it's also, it's right in the center of Silicon Valley, but still has a nice vibe of a, of a smaller town, city, and I like that part of Palo Alto. And anything that I can help to, help in any way that I would be pretty happy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next candidate is Kellen Bott, and he is here in person.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Shall I start?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kellen Bott. Really glad to be here. Thank you for your time today. So I'm interested in, in a position with the Architectural Review Board. I decided to, to apply really for two reasons. One is I have two young sons that attend Addison Elementary School, and I want to set a good example for them of civic engagement. You know, they're going to grow into young men. I think it's important that, you know, democracy, there's all aspects of society that have to, to volunteer and be a part of that. We have to really participate in that. So it's really a set example for them, like my parents did for me in my native hometown of Chicago. The second reason really is, I think I can offer something, this is a bit of a fresh perspective. I'm not a designer or an architect. I'm not a builder. I don't have any affiliation with, you know, any design firm or construction firm. I'm just a resident. I've been a resident of Palo Alto since 2017. I've been both a renter and a homeowner in this city. I'm familiar with the, some of the challenges that we face, just in terms of sustainable growth and transportation, cost of living, energy use, conservation, our relationship with nature. I'm a proponent of the outdoors. I love road cycling. I take my sons to, to the shore, to Bay Shore parks. We go to neighborhood parks, and of course, we've been to Foothill Park. And it's, it's a blessing to be a part of this community, and this is just my way of kind of giving back. Now, professionally, I come from a technical background, two computer science degrees and an MBA. So I want to apply some of the things that I've learned through my career, about 25 years, applying tech to whatever I do in life, and, and civic engagement is one of those things. I think there's things we can do, maybe applying automation, AI, to streamline certain things. And I, and I've done a bit of research as a layperson on what other cities are doing and what other communities are doing, both close to home in the state of California, as well as a little bit further ashore. For example, I recently read that the province of British Columbia in Canada is using, they're essentially looking at historical permitting and approvals and permit violations to identify future areas where there could be friction with developers. So that could be something that we can look at. Maybe we're already using that, and we should just tell the story to a little bit louder. And yeah, so that's a little bit about me, but I'd love to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, councilmembers. Councilmember Vinker?
Hello, and thank you for applying. I appreciate the example setting for your two sons. I appreciate mentioning nature and, and, and being concerned about that as we plan for sustainable growth. You addressed this a little bit in your opening statement, but I have kind of two curiosities, and I'll put them together just for efficiency, since we're on a limited clock. And, and that is the fact that you're not an architect, but you have been a multifamily developer. And that's, at least that's what I think it says here, provide my unique voice as a multifamily developer. And I'm curious about that, because that often presents unique challenges. But mostly, how that can be done with this intriguing Palo Alto as an opportunity to continue to lead by adapting certain, certain cutting-edge advanced technologies, and you mentioned AI. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about, you know, how you think the technologies could serve us and how your experience as a developer but not an architect would fit in.
Thank you. So I'll just clarify that that's a family business that I was a part of in Chicago. So I don't, it's, it's not in our local community, which is why I didn't bring it up in my opening statement. But so my dad and my uncle were multifamily apartment developers, and I joined. um so my dad and my uncle were multifamily um apartment developers and I joined that business early on in my life. Um and I have been a landlord before, so I know the challenges. I think, I think in a place, high cost of living locale like the Bay Area, which is a little bit different than the Midwest that I grew up in, um we, we, we're, we, we can take like, we're already doing things like um increasing density for, you know, like how many properties could be on a particular lot, like ADUs and JADUs. And I, and as a homeowner myself, I've seen some of those laws and the impact on communities. So I think we're, we're we're, we're trying to balance things in the right way. So I, wha- what I think we could, we could use AI specifically is essentially for example, th- there's a lot of, uh there's been some media coverage on some developments in in the downtown area, um University Avenue um as well as on El Camino and transit corridors. Um I think s- sometimes when, when a developer presents like a uh a design, they omit what's around and and you know, people just it's hard for both the folks on the planning team and who are doing the approvals, maybe even in the council, as well as the general public to get a sense of the scale. So AI can really help, like if you take uh technology like augmented reality, you there's things where you can maybe put on, um and again, I'm really shooting from the hip here, but you, you can imagine, we see it in the movies all the time, you put on AR glasses and you can stand in a particular spot and then understand this is the impact the structure will have on the surrounding landscape and the facade. So that's not that far-fetched. I think there are people doing that today. Um we can just look at things that are available off the shelf and maybe bring that to Palo Alto.
Councilor Lou?
Thank you and thank you for your application. So I wanted to ask a question about uh how you would steer conversations in the ARB. So in the ARB, the conversations are often very technical or very detailed, like where the trash should be put out uh on the sidewalk and things like that. And they can also go fairly high level about um what the best use of a site is and things like that. Both of those things I really associate, I really associate from an architect's perspective. So um yeah, how would you contribute to those conversations or how would you also be able to structure other conversations on uh topics that you'd want to address for those kinds of projects?
Yeah, thank you. I I think that we have a well-defined um body of standards. The, the codes are there. Um I I think as a layperson, the friction comes from either misinterpreting something where you don't really understand um uh or or not being able to balance varying opinions. So for example, if if I have a house um in a particular neighborhood and then across the street they want to build a massive structure, I might I might be worried about the impact that that construction would have on on my life, not just during the construction phase, but afterwards in terms of traffic. So I think I could be a voice of the community that I don't have a stake in, you know, I either industry, but uh the development side um or or the non-development side, but I I I think I'd be a bridge between that. And my, and the reason I applied for this position was that it seemed like you were looking at a certain number of non-architects, not non-designers. So I feel like I can read the technical part well, but I don't really think that's where the problem is. The problem is having a human-to-human conversation about what are your concern about, you know, and balancing that with with the other side or multiple sides.
Councilor Richter?
Yeah, you mentioned that, oh, thank you for applying first. You mentioned that you had applied for some permits on your two houses. Uh what's your experience with that and how could we improve the situation?
Oh, great question. I I I don't think I have enough time to talk about it in ninety seconds, but I I will, I'll say this. It has improved a lot. So um the first series of permits we applied for was um probably only twenty twenty and it was substantial, was putting a pool in, putting an ADU, JDU. And I think something of that caliber needs, uh you know, like a proper review, you have to, you have to submit designs. Um what what I was really pleased to see was much later, uh very recently, there's a a streamlined a permit process, which is instant permitting, fantastic, by the way, as a, as a, as a resident. Because I'd gone through the pain of the prior thing and now you can see if I'm not changing any walls, if I'm not adding pipes and electrical, then I can go online and with a contractor get an instant approval. That was a game changer. So now I can retail my bathroom and, you know, put up new cabinets. So I think that works really well. Um what else can we do with that sort of technology and that sort of automation? Are there things that are repetitive that we can take the codes that exist, apply a little bit of automation and then streamline that so that everybody comes out a little happier, but we don't sacrifice building standards and safety and things like that? So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for applying and give us, give us your non-architectural point of view on the Architectural Review Board. That was very interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Naveen uh Govid.
Hi, good evening.
Evening.
Mayor uh Lawing, Vice Mayor uh Wickner and uh council members. My name is Naveen Govind and thank you for the opportunity to talk about my experience and qualifications for uh serving on the board, uh Architecture, Architecture Review Board. I have um bachelor's degree in architecture from India and urban planning degree from Texas A&amp;M, uh with an emphasis in urban design. I have over uh twenty years of experience uh working in the Bay Area, in the architecture industry. Um I have a solid knowledge of uh design principles, um uh construction techniques and California Building Code. I have worked on a wide range of projects um from uh office buildings to hospitals and to airports. And um also I'm currently serving as a board member for uh Historical Architecture Review Board for City of Fremont, where I review projects uh for compliance uh with uh um um state and city uh codes. And um currently working as a senior project manager with City of Mountain View with Public Works, um mostly managing uh capital improvement projects. I um, you know, I always admire City of Palo Alto for high standards in design and also um thoughtful uh planning, city planning. So I would um really appreciate an opportunity to serve as a board member and I'll be honored. And I can answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Uh first up is Councilor Luthka Hames.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Govind, for applying. I'm intrigued by the fact that you're involved with the City of Fremont and the City of Mountain View and uh throwing your application into this process for Palo Alto. Can you share with us what you see as a couple of the advantages of having um sort of a multi municipality perspective and are there any drawbacks?
Sure, um I, you know, um like you mentioned, I've worked in both public and private sectors and right now I think uh some of the challenges, the step not City of Palo Alto, but all the cities are facing is, you know, a right balance between growth and trying to um comply with the city ordinances when it comes to maintaining the character of the neighborhood and also um the safety. So I think uh coming from uh um an architectural background and with urban design uh degree and working for a public sector, you know, I, I can strike the balance or I can um try to help candidates, you know, um guide to achieve this balance. I think that's, that's what value comes from.
Councilor Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for applying. Uh I'm also curious and interested about your historical what is it, the Historical Resource Board?
Historical Architecture Review Board.
Okay, sort of Architectural Review Board. Uh interesting board. Uh I'm curious, how does, how, how does that inform kind of your views on modern projects, growth, how we, you know, how this, yeah, how how does that inform your kind of views on that?
Sure, um um the City of Fremont, when they um adopted the the housing element, I think uh what, what the state uh has mandated was every city has to, um you know, also you know, uh provide program four, which me, which allows uh the candidates to just fill out a form, like a checklist. And um you know, as long as they comply to the checklist, which um clearly states uh, you know, the historical architecture character, how you meet the character when you either alter your building or when you expand or when you build a ADU, um it makes the process very streamlined and that's helping a lot of customers. Um and uh, you know, I am actually getting less projects to review because, you know, it's so streamlined, the process. So that um uh reviewing the projects, you know, when it comes to new development or just altering the the building, I think it's really, um you know, uh we have to make a conscious effort to make sure you um you know, supplement the character of the neighborhood. And so not supplement, you know, you um match the character of the neighborhood. I think that's the key.
Um I was very intrigued that of all the items that you suggested that had interest architecturally, it was the downtown Calaveno area uh signage. Uh and I also find that very appealing because there's, you know, human architecture that's there. But you notice that, you note that um some of these come, these outdoor programs come with problems. So what are those and how would you go about making some decisions with your colleagues?
Sorry, I can repeat the question?
You mentioned Calav signage program and outdoor activation in your application as an appealing project uh for you. And you note that it's important, but there are problems with it. So the specific thing was challenges that come with outdoor programs?
I, I'm not sure if that was my application.
You're right, I'll ask the next candidate.
That was a code baller.
That was actually a test question. You did, you did really well. Thank you. Councilor Richter?
Oh, thank you for applying. Uh so what's your general philosophy for larger buildings, commercial and retail? What are your likes and don't likes in architecture for those?
Think um to me, you know, when it comes to, we, you know, primarily, I think we, we have to promote growth um and uh and so the um state has mandated uh growth for all the cities, you know, they have to meet a certain number of housing uh you know, um development. So when it comes to growth, when it comes to housing or commercial, I think it's very important to keep uh um the human scale in mind. It has to be pedestrian-friendly, it has to be transit-oriented, um cut down the speed, um create more bike lanes and then also make it more safe for the kids to bike to school um and provide more uh parks and uh more um more parks where it's uh all-inclusive parks. I think uh there are parks that Palo Alto has in Magical Bridge Park and Mountain View also. I think as a community, I think it's um important to provide the facilities that cater to all kinds of people.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you have a, any closing statement you would like to make?
Uh no, I think thanks, thank you for the opportunity. It'll be an honor for me to serve on the board.
All right, thank you very much.
Give me one moment. Um Collaborative Design Studio, can you confirm that you are Danny Cow, our next candidate? Hi, um Collaborative Design Studio, I just wanted to confirm, this is Danny Cow. You should be able to unmute yourself. Oh. Um we'll go ahead and move to our next candidate. Um our next candidate is Bay Su. And she is in person.
Thank you. Uh good evening, council members. My name is Bay Su. Uh I'm here for Architectural Review Board today. Um and um just wanna quickly introduce myself. I am a licensed architect here in the state of California. Also have uh certificates on uh WELL AP and LEAP sustainable uh certificates. Uh I was born and raised in China and I moved here to the States about twenty years ago. Uh went to Berkeley for my undergraduate degree on architecture and I went to Cornell for my master's degree in architecture. I also minored in urban planning. Um I started my career here in San Francisco back in two thousand seventeen, so experienced about eight years uh in architecture. Uh in studios architecture, where I started my career, I was mostly focusing on large-scale projects. Um I spearheaded the entitlement process for eighty-eight Bloxham, which is um a one million square feet of office mixed-use buildings. Uh it's two-tower high-rise and it has uh multiple community programs in the bottom of the, in the podium of the towers. And it also has affordable housing next to the building where we're granting air rights to the city uh to the uh city of San Francisco for future affordable housing development. Um and that's where I kind of started my entitlement experience with multiple cities. Um I joined DES Architects in two thousand twenty-one. Um and that's where I started to work on all the entitlement and front end of the projects, doing all the sustain, uh sorry, doing all the um uh preliminary and uh feasibility design for multiple projects. I interfaced with uh many jurisdictions. I'm kind of new to Palo Alto, but I've previously, previously worked with Daly City, City of San Francisco. Uh also a little bit of experience in Fremont, Union City and City of Hayward. Uh I really enjoy the process of handling the entitlement and then uh kind of bonding um the developers and multiple stakeholders together to kind of work on one project and push the project forward. Um I also uh intern uh in City of Albany Planning Department for a year and a half. Um kind of working on the bike lane projects and also working on um tree uh renovation projects for the small city. Uh and um I always enjoy kind of the public engagement uh as part of my uh my job and that's why I wanted to serve in the Architectural Review Board. And open to any kind of questions you might have.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Um can you share any thoughts you have on the uh any uh differences in the context of the community of Palo Alto compared to San Francisco or Daly City or some of the other cities you've worked in?
Yes, um so again, I'm fairly new to the city of Palo Alto, but um it's it's not a news to any architects in uh in the Bay Area, knowing that Palo Alto is on like the top list of hard to get your design through. Um and actually in San Francisco, my experience is um they're fairly open-minded and they wanted to help you, they wanted to have development and they want to help you to get the projects through. Here in Palo Alto, there is more of a traditional, traditional value that we wanted to hold on to. And therefore there are a lot of um challenges and design aesthetic review on, you know, whatever new development we're trying to promote. And I feel like that's something interesting because where do we make that compromises, right? We want to promote growth, but we also want to make sure that we are holding on to, you know, the values.
My, my question is more on what, what is your understanding of what are those that context of Palo Alto and values compared to those other cities as opposed to the the process?
I see. Um my understanding is Palo Alto here wanted to promote um sort of um kind of like a traditional um value of um, you know, honoring the the existing context and trying to work with a more cohesive, cohesive um design environment here uh versus others. I mean a lot of city is trying to do that, um but I also feel like Palo Alto has more kind of a high standard and stringent standard on holding on to that um design value.
Can you talk about, oh, thank you for applying. Uh can you talk about some of your experiences with bodies similar to the ARB in other cities? And how that would inform the way you serve on the ARB?
Yes, uh so I actually don't have any experience with the ARB on my other projects, um but I do have, you know, planning uh experience with other planning departments where people will comment on, not people, but like the planning uh planners will be commenting on the materials that we're using and how would that affect, you know, the environment, not just the building, but also how um it will really have an impact on the community and also the animals, for example, bird-saving glazing and how that will really impact on uh the surrounding environment, not just the human environment, but also the um the bigger sus- uh bio- biological society. And I think a lot of times the design um changes are sparked through all these comments. So working with these kind of um constraints is what actually help us as designers to promote um new thoughts and in, in design. So working with these kind of, um, constraints is what actually help us as designers to promote, um, new thoughts and in, in design innovations.
Council member Lithgow Hames.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for applying. I was intrigued by your comments, both about the value of signage and about, um, adaptive reuse. And just given the time, I'm gonna pick one, and that is adaptive reuse. Could you walk us through how you go about thinking about whether a project is suitable? Or, you know, a great, uh, site for adaptive reuse? To what extent? Do you keep what's there versus build new, balancing the cost of the project and, you know, redoing it all versus, um, maintaining a, a portion that's already there? Walk us through the trade offs and, you know, how do you ultimately land on the right amount to keep, uh, versus to completely redo?
I think the first step is always to identify, you know, the value of this particular building or that fabric, what it means to the community. And we need to absolutely preserve, you know, the core portion of that, um, of the architecture. There's always, you know, what, what can we reproduce and what can we replace? And the value is different, right? Like to reproduce, reproduce a wall is probably cheaper than reproducing the entire wall. So there are different trade offs that, um, where as designers, we should really work with, um, people who has the special knowledge on historic preservation and making sure that we're preserving the key pieces, if not the entire piece, uh, depending on the actual value of that, of the building. Uh, for example, I really admire the Highline project in New York and I feel like that's really making a, a difference. They're reproducing parts of the, parts of the railroad, but it's also maintaining the entire entirety of the structure to make that structure relevant again, but also create a, a commu- a community space for people to hang out and to appreciate the history of that, um, mid packing district. So that's, that's a project that I always go back to when I do preservation projects.
Thank you.
Council member Rekdo.
Thank you for applying. Uh, impressive portfolio in your application, uh, very large projects. I'm sure there's a, a big team. So in what specific impacts did you have on the design?
Uh, depends on the project. Obviously earlier on in my projects in studios, architecture, I was more, I was, um, again, working on ADA Boxum, that was my main project for five years. And I was from the part of the project from the get go. I attended all the planning meetings and interfaced with all the, um, Office Mayor of Housing and then parking racks to kind of identify what value this project will bring to the city. Um, but I was also handling a lot of detailed coordination, structural coordination, MEP coordination, just to make sure that the technical part of the project is covered. Uh, as I move on to DES, where I was a little bit more senior in my position, uh, I was, um, also very passionate about design. So I want to make sure that my role is, um, taking a, a lead on the design perspective of the project. So I was, uh, doing a lot of the design, designing, um, and then also, uh, to, to make sure the design actually gets implemented correctly. We, I also work on the technical detail drawings.
And so we say design, you mean how the exterior looks or the functional, or what, what aspect of the design do you work on?
So, um, depending on the project, if the project is just a single lot, lot line zero ground up, mostly the building skin. But if we're talking about campus planning, which I also have done some in San Diego, uh, we, we look at everything holistically, all the traffic circulation and also, uh, the landscape planning, civil planning of the, of the project. Um, I always think that the building is not just, you know, a solid, single building touching the ground, but it's also how it's interacting with the remaining of the environment.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, we only have 14 seconds. If you want to say something quickly.
Um, I just appreciate opportunity. I didn't expect this board, but, um, a little nervous, but, um, appreciate opportunity again.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Our final, excuse me, our final candidate is Grace Lee.
Hello, my name is Grace Lee and I thought I would start just with a big thank you to each of the council members for all the time and energy and meetings in this room and looking over packets and, um, and also the city staff for preparation of all the documents and communication. I think I will start with my professional background and then talk a little bit about my previous time on the board. Um, and then just some lessons learned. Um, so my background is really at, um, kind of a nexus point, the crossroads of architecture and landscape and planning. Um, I studied both architecture and planning in graduate school at Berkeley, um, and moved to Palo Alto, uh, first as an undergrad, but then most of this past 30 years. My professional background started in an office of landscape architecture. And I find that I consistently come back to that. Um, and so I mention it because some of the projects that come to mind that really have informed me as a designer and an educator, has, have been, uh, streets. Uh, one of the first projects that I actually had the opportunity to work on was, uh, 180 foot wide boulevard, building face to building face in a small, in a town in Georgia. Um, and the elevation rise was 53 feet from the, from the bottom to up to the hills with the mansions. Um, I participated in a lot of community process. I interviewed, uh, people in bus shelters and folks who wanted a manicured garden and, um, evaluated where bicyclists were, um, how people were crossing the street. And so a project like that really kind of gave me, uh, a lot of lessons in terms of what architecture is. Um, there were also small, uh, shelters and, uh, small buildings, um, that were ultimately designed for this project. Later I moved more into, um, working in with affordable housing and nonprofits and in particular a project, uh, a small group, um, Asian Empire Design in San Francisco, um, and worked on the, um, housing side and community development. Um, I did work there with, in projects in Oakland and West Oakland, East Oakland in terms of street facade, improvements for small business owners. Um, from there I moved on, uh, much more into kind of the how to design, um, drafting master plan guidelines, consulting with cities. Um, one project in particular with the city of Long Beach in terms of residential, a historic residential neighborhood. And just what would be the guidelines for any additions, um, to this small historic neighborhood. Later, um, I actually moved to a larger firm where we did a lot more kind of mixed use development and retail. Um, and a lot of, um, kind of planning for what could be with clients that were developers or consortium of, of interested individuals. And there I learned, um, to really, from the developer's perspective, to look at a site in terms of the possibilities. And environmental review and the Spotted Salamander and Ronard, Ronard Park in Sonoma, that's going to end a lot of the development out there. Through my work as a volunteer, um, oh, no, no, I did work with an office on Woodside Elementary School. But as a volunteer, I worked also on, uh, school campuses in Hillsborough, um, master plan updates. Again, you know, an architect is, is really just an architect and there's a lot of handing off to various consultants. So, you know, I was helping to review acoustical studies and, um, environmental habitats and burrowing owls, as well as, um, thinking about traffic circulation, parking, um, areas of service, how to think about daylight and how the sun is moving around or how the campus would and the school would be benefiting from daylight, how to satisfy a very difficult program. Um, and then I think I just described my work with, um, Carrasco and Associates, a Palo Alto firm, Tony Carrasco and Al Benaru and, uh, you know, the bulk of the work is commercial. However, there is also a fair amount of housing. And so I've had the, um, privilege to, you know, work on projects in Mountain View, uh, East Palo Alto, proposals in Half Moon Bay, presenting to boards in entitlement review and also leading, uh, neighborhood meetings and, uh, kind of spearheading the conceptual design, taking it through design development. But I am in no way a construction documents person. I, I fully rely on, uh, others on that end. Um, but I do have the experience of laying out parking spaces and thinking about, uh, where there might be collisions at a driveway and, uh, also, um, how to evaluate, uh, options in terms of neighborhood scale. And, and looking at a, an app, uh, application, now I'm moving more into my previous time as ARB, of sustainability goals, um, understanding the neighborhood at different levels, not as just a building, but maybe it's a block or two blocks or three blocks or within the context of, um, an area plan. And I feel that the comprehensive review, I mean, the, the comprehensive plan and, uh, a lot of the work that the city has done, is unrecognized in terms of its, uh, breadth and scope. Um, and so that's why I wanted to begin with the thank yous, because I think that the Architecture Review Board is a, is one board that interacts with the council in a very limited way. Um, I also appreciate how the ARB does a working plan, does the retreats, you know, overlaps with Historic Resources Board in the past, has a three-year tenure or, you know, sometimes, um, really relies on the architects or the people of technical knowledge on the, in the group. I think also sometimes there is a lot of discussion about small details that do not actually show themselves to users or to, uh, the community. Cause I actually like to approach sites in terms of, uh, maybe thinking beyond, uh, the binocular, you know, right up and, and I-
We're down to three minutes. We would like to ask-
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm rambling. Okay.
Uh, Council member Bert.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so just following up on, um, your experience previously on the ARB and the direction we're going as a city with higher density housing and a lot of affordable housing projects. Uh, I'm just interested in, um, what, any thoughts that you have on how those projects can be integrated? As you mentioned with transportation and egress issues and all that, how do we, how do we reconcile that increased density with still having, uh, projects that function well?
Yes, and thank you for that kind of question. I believe that, um, the purview of the ARB member is to evaluate proposals that are, um, generated by clients who, who have hired consultants. So, you know, to some degree, I believe that a very strong ARB member would be someone who evaluates those with a faith in the design professional, however, and the client. Um, I, I think that, uh, each member should be given, and maybe this should be brought out more in the training in terms of, um, kind of this research and detective work that, um, that begins to, that's needed. In terms of densities, uh, I believe that the ARB, uh, is often tasked with the, well, the findings in terms of, right, the, the aesthetics and how the program is being used in an effective way. I mean, I go back to the findings. I really do. And, and I feel, and I do, uh, I do think also that, um, often the eye level view versus the vehicular view or somebody on a bike or a visitor who might be coming, who's not in the community of that high density residential, I mean, putting yourself in that perspective in terms of the experience of a space, um, can be very effective. And I think that ARB members, I mean, and gratefully, I think that past board members have been very sensitive in that way. And I think also the listening period is, is important because sometimes there's other perspectives in the room and that comes through. And that is another, um, way to evaluate a project is hearing from others.
Okay, we're out of time, except for 12 seconds. If you want to make any final comment.
Um, I, I'm, I just want to say that my application was very brief and I heard that there was, uh, sometimes the ARB struggles to recruit. And so, I mean, that's why I'm here. I felt like this is a great board. Um, I, I wanted to, I want to give back to the city. And also, um, I've learned things along the way in terms of the importance of, um, community forestry and trees.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Just a quick recap for the council and the public. Eight candidates were interview, um, invited to interview this evening. We interviewed six candidates, um, noting for the record, Matthew Kelly did withdraw his application and Danny Cow staff is reaching out to see why, um, he was not here as he did confirm his interview time slot. So we'll let the council know, um, an update on Danny Cow when we receive one. Um, and with that, our appointments are scheduled for June 2nd, council meeting, which is next week.
Right. At which time we'll have public comment on, um, those that are applying.
Correct. So the council, the council will get an update from the city clerk as well as the public on the process for the interview selection for the Architectural Review Board and Boarding Commissions moving forward.
Okay. So that concludes this item for now. Okay, council member Lithgow Hames.
Could I just ask the clerk, I know we also interviewed two other people for this board some weeks ago. And it is important that we consider all applicants. Uh, could you remind us what the date of that meeting was so that we might, if we want to refresh our recollection on any notes we took or rewatch the video, we can find it.
Three candidates were initially interviewed on March 24th, city council meeting. Three, correct. We, um, two incumbents and one, um, new candidate.
Okay, Council member Bert, did you have another question? Okay. Um, all right, that concludes this item. And the next item on our agenda is a closed session. We'll take, uh, public comment on that shortly. It's conference with legal counsel on potential litigation in two cases, um, that are stated here in item AA1. Any speakers?
No requests to speak and no hands are raised on Zoom for closed session, item AA1.
Okay. Thank you. So in that case, I would need a motion to go into closed session. Some moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Bert.
Yes.
Council member Lou.
Yes.
Mayor Lowing.
Yes.
Council member Lithgow Hames.
Yes.
Council member Stone.
Yes.
Council member Rekdo.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Vinker.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
This item is scheduled to go until 7:40. As always, we can be back earlier or later than that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are back from our closed session. And I do have information to report. The council has directed the city attorney to take necessary steps to join the case of City and County of San Francisco versus Trump. U.S. District Court for the Northern District of California, case number 25 CV 01350. This challenges federal executive orders and administrative directives that threaten to withhold federal funds and initiate enforcement action against state and local government entities, which limit local cooperation with federal immigration enforcement. This is action taken in compliance with the California Values Act, and the vote was 7-0. Okay, with that, we move on to our next item. Three pack is going on. Does it change, changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda. I would note that in anticipation of a packed evenings tonight, I will dispense with the city manager comments. You have information in your packet.
Okay, then we'll move on to public comment for items not on the agenda.
We have six requests to speak.
Normal three minutes.
All right. Our first speaker is CO CO Ola Vee.
Good evening, Mayor Lawing, council members, city staff, and for those who are joining remotely. My name is CO CO Wovea, Communications and Engagement Manager, and I'm proud to speak tonight on behalf of Job Train located in Menlo Park. First and foremost, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the city council, to the city staff, and to the residents of the city of Palo Alto for receiving our organization's nonprofit funding request application with such thoughtfulness and care. We know that behind every application is a community hoping to make a difference, and we're grateful for the opportunity to share ours with you. This year, Job Train is celebrating 60 years of transforming lives. Born out of the civil rights movement, we were founded with a bold and enduring mission to help individuals reclaim their lives from poverty and unemployment by preparing them for sustainable careers in Silicon Valley. For six decades, we've walked alongside those striving for a better future, offering not just job training, but trust, not just opportunity, but empowerment. We turn potential into prosperity, believing deeply in the capacity of every person to thrive when given the tools and support to do so. One person, one family at a time. While our application is still under review, we remain hopeful. Hopeful because we've seen what's possible when public support meets community commitment. Hopeful because we believe in collaboration. And hopeful because we know that the city of Palo Alto understands the importance of investing in people. Thank you again for considering our request and for the work that you do to support a stronger, more inclusive community. We look forward to the possibility of working together to expand opportunity to those who need it most. Thank you and good evening.
Our next speaker is Reese G.
Good evening, Mayor Lawing, city council members, and the Palo Alto community. My name is Reese Churese. I'm a junior at Gunn High School, who, like some of the colleagues you've heard from in previous public comment sections, advocate for the lowering of the voting age municipally to 16 years old. Now, in some of the previous public comment sections, we have talked about some of the excuse me, statistical benefits of lowering the voting age to 16. I would like to expand upon some of those and also dispel a misconception I've heard when advocating for lowering the voting age to 16 that some people might hold, some people might not, and that is that is an untested or fringe or radical idea. On the contrary, there are many countries and cities which have lowered their voting ages effectively to 16. This includes Brazil, Argentina, Ecuador, Cuba, Nicaragua, Malta, Jersey, the Isle of Man, Guernsey, and Austria for countries. And for cities even within the United States, this would include cities such as Oakland, Berkeley, Battleboro, Vermont, Mount Rainier, Maryland, Newark, New Jersey, and many more. Now, this extensive list, which hopefully should soon grow to expand, which should hopefully soon expand to include Palo Alto. We have not seen many negative side effects to the lowering of the voting age to 16. On the contrary, we have seen many positive benefits, the most notable of which is increased civic engagement, which my colleague talked about in the previous address. In light of this information, the question I would like to end with is if all these other places can lower the voting age to 16 effectively and see increased civic engagement from it, why can't Palo Alto? Thank you very much, and if anyone would like to collaborate with us, we're always available, and our email is on the slip, so thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Sarit S.
Good evening, Mayor Lawing and council members. Last week, outside the Capitol Jewish Museum in DC, a gunman murdered Sarah Milgram and Yaron Lachinsky just because he thought they were Jewish. They were at an event focused on humanitarian aid, including for Palestinians in Gaza. But the shooter didn't care. He yelled "Free Palestine," pulled out a kaffiyah, and said, "I did this for Gaza." We are heartbroken and terrified, and we're not surprised. We've been begging our leaders to take this seriously. These slogans, "From the River to the Sea" and "Free Palestine" and "Globalize the Intifada," which we hear in Palo Alto, are not metaphors. Whether or not the people yelling them mean them that way, they are heard as a permission slipped for violence against Jews. The Intifada was a deadly campaign of suicide bombings, stabbings, and shootings against Jews. Globalizing the Intifada means a deadly campaign against Jews worldwide, like Governor Josh Shapiro's house being firebombed and Sarah and Yaron's murders in DC. And if nothing changes, it won't stop there.
Our next speaker is Robin M.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Lawing, City Council. And unfortunately, this sort of incitement happens here in Palo Alto. At a family-friendly Palestinian cultural event, Tonking Plaza, organizers blasted music praising Cain West, a man who's in his music praises Hitler. A speaker called Jews violent colonizers who think they deserve special treatment. The violence has come to Palo Alto as well. We all saw the violence of the pro-Palestinian protest at the Stanford Shopping Mall, where a police officer was hit by a car as the protesters fled. Groups like CARE, whose leader recently said that would seem to be very happy that President Biden is suffering from cancer, and organizations like AMP, which is being investigated by a Senate committee for ties to terrorist organizations. These organizations sponsor events on Saturday afternoons here in Palo Alto. They're demonstrating again this week on Thursday at the courthouse. We support free speech, and we support the right to criticize government. But this is not that. This is antisemitism disguised as activism. Blasting Cain isn't protest, it's hate. We're scared, because in DC last week, words like these and protests like these turned to violence. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lori M.
Violence is even being normalized in schools, so we shouldn't be surprised when it hits the streets. We know that you don't oversee PAUSD, but did you know that its new required ethnic studies class includes a unit on resistance? 14-year-olds discuss when violent resistance is justified and evaluated as a tactic. So why are we surprised when protest signs, even in Palo Alto, say "by any means necessary"? That's not a slogan, that's a warning. And it's not just Palo Alto. In Santa Ana Unified School District, teachers called a Jewish colleague "a colonized mind and an effing baby." They talked about scheduling meetings during the Jewish holidays so Jews couldn't attend. They called Jewish community members racist Zionists. The district settled the lawsuit, but the damage was done. In Marin, a teacher told her class that there are too many Jews in the district. The state had to step in. When violence is legitimized and Jews singled out, violence follows and Jews suffer. This isn't theory, and it's not history. It's real people like Sarah Milgram and Yaron Lachinsky. Words matter.
Our next speaker is Alan C.
Good evening to the city council. Wanted to tell you that we're very grateful to the mayor, to the city council, and to the HRC for raising awareness about hate, and we're grateful to the Palo Alto Police for the work that they do to keep us safe every day. We feel it's important for our city leaders to take action against hate when it shows up in Palo Alto. The terrible murders in DC make that clear. There are three things I wanted to point out that the city council can do. First, enforce rules. Groups that repeatedly violate the terms of their permits should face consequences. They need to abide by time, place, and manner restrictions. Second, don't support events tied to hate groups. City staff should ensure that events sponsored by the city aren't linked to groups that promote or tolerate hate. And finally, remind everyone that words really do matter. Statements like "from the river to the sea" may sound innocuous, but they aren't peaceful. They actually promote violence, and they should be rejected by the city council. Thank you very much.
And that concludes public comment on items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item is the consent calendar. And is there any comment on consent?
Yes, we have one request to speak. Our first speaker is Aram J.
So on item number five, there is a request to increase the compensation for the independent police auditor, Mike Genalko and Steve Conley. And as a general rule, I, you know, I support having the independent police auditor. I know that Councilor Lithcon Haynes wanted to know who in 2006 was behind that, and I'll, I'll tell you that as a citizen, I was big time behind that, and LaDores was on the city council at the time, so there's a little historical footnote. I'm concerned that I didn't get a response from Mike in reference to my request, and I'm concerned that Ed, Chicada, and the city council didn't reach out when I made an offer that the Coalition for Justice and Accountability, that's been in the business of speaking on tasers for the last 25 of 23 years. In any event, I'd very much like to make sure that when we have a study session involving the independent police auditors, we take up issues not just from the staff and from the police department's perspective, but let, and the independent police auditors perspective, but let's bring the citizens in, ACLU, Coalition for Justice and Accountability, and other justice organizations, so that we get a well-rounded perspective on the issues. So that's, that's really critical to me. And, you know, when the coalition comes to talk, they're not going to go after the ma, the mayor for his lust for genocide or any other, the other council members to do that. They're going to stick strictly to the issue of tasers, or if we do police canines, that's what we're going to do. I'm even willing to step aside and let the rest of my coalition speak to you all if that's going to make a difference as to whether you'd be willing to do that. So, you know, that's my thought. And, and, you know, by the way, the wacko Zionist that just spoke to you, why didn't they say something about the daily death toll in Palestine, hundreds, every single day now, children? They're such, you know, heartless individuals, not one word, not one word.
Please keep your comments to the item that you're discussing.
Sure. I'll do, I'll do that for you, Ed. That's not, that's not a problem. So I couldn't figure out on the count, on the, the compensation issue, why, what more the OIR was taking on. I know a few years ago, I had suggested that they take on the pointing of the weapon, which they did, and which they are now reporting on, canines, and we expanded it, but I don't know where the 40,000 more comes in. So maybe Ed, Chicada, you could reach out to me and explain that, because I couldn't see it on either the memo or the amendments to the contracts. Okay, that's it for me tonight.
That concludes public comment and consent calendar items two through five.
Okay, from the council, are there any requests to poll or no votes? Saying none, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rechtal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithcon Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Bert?
Yes.
The motion, for the record, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We're going to jump back up and get the council member questions, comments, and announcements. Do we have any of those tonight? Go ahead. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things to report on. First is the Northern California Power Agency Board meeting. Last Thursday, staff and I attended the monthly NCPA Executive Committee and Commission meetings. The commission approved our annual wildfire mitigation plan, investment policy and personnel procedures, and contracts for electric and pipeline maintenance and more. The commission also moved three projects forward. The New Spicer Meadows Spillway Project for concrete patch maintenance on the dam. We also authorized working with WAPA, the Western Area Power Association, on projects for the Central Valley Project Power Plants, which are hydro power, federal hydro power plants, where we get almost half of our electricity. And we authorized some NCPA members to do a transaction agreement amongst themselves for renewable energy credits. So that's our NCPA report. Also, just wanted to mention that I am speaking on Thursday at a two-day conference at Stanford entitled "Climate Resilience and Local Government Policy: Lessons from Los Angeles and Tel Aviv". Speaking is a generous term. I'm giving a five-minute introduction alongside the Director of Stanford Center on Democracy Development and the Rule of Law, regarding the importance of local climate action around the globe, the need to share best practices and technology as well as roadblocks and stumbles, and showcasing Palo Alto's climate leadership. That's going to be followed by an opening keynote from the Deputy Mayor of LA for Energy and Sustainability, and a Tel Aviv Council member who chairs their Environmental Protection Committee. So the Stanford Conference is an academic event that compares the local climate practices of LA and Tel Aviv. It is not about the broader policies of either country. However, by speaking at the start of this conference, I look forward to imploring attendees to also consider the broader context, including the wildfires in LA and implications of the war in Gaza. As we know, alongside the heartbreaking and tragic human suffering, there are significant environmental consequences. Finally, I note that previously, the city of Palo Alto was thanked on the conference webpage, but because the city is not a sponsor and it was causing some confusion, the city has been removed from that list. My last thing to report on was I took this meeting remotely last week because I was in Washington DC in my capacity as vice chair of the Bay Area Air District Board. I went along with our chair, our executive officer, our legislative officer, and our public affairs officer. So it was a very small delegation of five of us. And, you know, when I was there three weeks ago, I think that was when the House voted to reverse the Clean Air Act waivers granted to California by the Biden administration that allow us to have stricter vehicle emission standards than federal government standards. And they invoked, they went back and did this through this Congressional Review Act, which allows a look back under certain circumstances. But to effectuate that reversal of our Clean Air Act standards, the Senate would also need to vote for it. But it looked like the General Accounting Office and Senate parliamentarian had ruled you can't do that. However, while we were there, Senator Thune decided to agendize it anyway. And the, as you likely know, the Senate voted also to reverse the California waivers. And what's frustrating about that is those waivers, it sounds like some special deal for California. They've been in that law for 50 years since the beginning, and the law actually says that we shall get them if certain conditions are met. So it's not like some gift we get. And, you know, it was just heartbreaking because we were on the Senate side talking to the staffers for our two California senators who were trying their darndest to prevent that vote and obviously could not. We, the next day, spoke with, I think, about five of our congressional delegation members, who were all just shaking their heads. And one in particular was Congressmember Garamendi, who was talking about his days as a football player at Berkeley, UC Berkeley, and how there were days they couldn't practice outside because the air was so bad. And the reason California had those waivers is our air has been the worst in the nation and still is, even though it's much better than it used to be. So I just mentioned that because that's going to impact this city, and it's now going to be on us to do it ourselves without the requirements of those regulations. And we really need to do everything in our power because it's a public health issue. And it's just really unfortunate. I will say also on that trip, we heard a lot about the dismantling of the EPA Office of Research and Development, their environmental justice programs. And, but we did have a good conversation to sort of educate our delegation about the issues we're facing out here with the reduction in funding for EV infrastructure and others. We met with Representatives Locardo, Mullin, Swalwell, DeSaulier, and Huffman's staff, because he'd been up till 7:00 AM, because they started the budget hearing at 1:00 AM, you might remember, and he was scheduled to speak at 2:00 AM, didn't speak till 7:00 AM. So at 10:00 AM, he was not in his office to speak with us. So it was a little wacky back there. But I will say, all of our delegation is supportive of our climate efforts here in Palo Alto and in the Bay Area generally. And they, to an office, to a person, to a congress member, encouraged us to pursue all means of advocacy that we could, including speaking across the aisle, including litigation, including whatever it is we could. So it was an interesting trip and an interesting time to be in Washington. Thank you.
Any other council members? Okay, we'll conclude that item. And we will now move to an item that's been continued, which is 4075 El Camino Way, Plan Community Ordinance, a request by the applicant Wellquest to add 16 units to their existing PC. And last time, we had full public comment and initial round of questions from council to staff. So we will pick it up as if public comment just ended, and we'll then readdress questions and comments to staff and finish up this item. Unless staff has anything at all to say. Okay. All right, so council members, we can just speak on the issue at hand. So I say, questions or comments? Councilmember Lou?
I just have one quick question to start my round, and I'll save comments for later. I had a question just to confirm about the daylight plane. And would any of the units along the back fence meet the more restrictive 10-foot and 30-degree setback? So, for example, I know collectively the units would not, but would any subset of the units on the second or third floor meet that more stringent setback?
Hi, sorry. That's not something I know off of the top of my head. I can take a look at that and see if we have that information available.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a few questions. First, just kind of curious why staff disagreed with PTC commissioners who favored the more restrictive daylight plane. I know they cited Chapter 18.38 for PC projects with less than 60% residential and being adjacent to single-family neighborhoods. So just curious, kind of staff perspective, and why you're not agreeing with the PTC on that one, or at least those commissioners?
The staff report reflects that the Architectural Review Board did recommend approval of the plans as presented. And although the PTC recommendation differed, it did not represent something that could not be approved by City Council, and we wanted City Council to make the ultimate decision.
I might also add that with recent work done on the housing element and the understanding of an aging population in Palo Alto and recognizing the limited resources that are available, that also factored into the staff decision to support more of these units, to support that component of our community.
Okay. And enough of this really kind of weighs on the decision, but these aren't, we don't get RENA credits for these.
So I think it's not a residential unit as we defined it in our code. And we did not treat them as residential units, so we speak of them somewhat in that regard. I think it remains an open question as to whether or not we can claim these as RENA unit credits. And that would be a conversation that we would have with HCD when the project gets approved and as we're reporting now.
Yeah, worth having that conversation. Small amount of units, so. But is there any indication? Do we know whether Palo Alto Commons will continue to pursue this project if they're only allowed to build on the portion of the building that is not facing Wilkie Way, as I believe was recommended by the PTC?
We'd like to defer to the applicant. I see that we have the property on that one.
Through the mayor, if that's okay.
Yes, I think they should be up here for a lot of these questions.
I can repeat the question if you need.
I think I got it. Yeah, the Planning Commission suggested seven units, and we decided that was not of interest. So we came back with the 16 units.
Is there a way to build the 16 units along the El Camino side?
No, there's not. I mean, there's, anything's possible. There's been talk of building a fourth floor over the third floor, but that would require, you know, vacating that whole entire portion of the building for a year or two, increasing the height of the elevators, redoing the elevator. So it's not a realistic alternative.
Okay, so from your perspective, it's basically all or nothing as far as this recommendation tonight?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Then, for staff, I'm curious what kind of guarantees are in the TDM that will protect neighboring communities from vehicular intrusion? And I'm concerned that we have an applicant with a history of noncompliance with the original TDM and conditions of approval. And although the staff report states that the property contains a sufficient number of spaces for the expanded use, the lived experiences from neighbors on Wilkie Way really tells us otherwise. And we can study something all day, but if we're going to ignore the actual people who live on the street or are impacted day by day, I find that to be much more compelling. And so I don't think we got much on what kind of protections are there within the TDM. So if you can expand on that, that'd be helpful.
So I'll start, and then Ms. Callis. There's been a name change. I don't know why I went back a couple of years. So just to acknowledge that there was a previous TDM requirement. And I think from the, it doesn't appear that that was ever implemented. I think that is in part shared by the applicant, but also with the city in us not following up to make sure that it was completed as well. This is a part of our conditions, and we have more improved TDM monitoring programs now. So I would expect that it'll be on the forefront of our radar as it gets implemented, and we'll be able to continue to do annual monitoring and reporting. So I think we'll be able to ensure that. And then as far as the specifics of the TDM plan, I'll turn that over to Ms. Callis.
So just a quick follow-up to that. So since those protections already exist within the TDM, we could be enforcing those and having that implemented today, correct?
I think the TDM is new, right? The one that we have is part of the.
Yes, the TDM plan is new, drafted as of January, but it has been reviewed by our Office of Transportation and would be ready to be implemented.
I thought there was a prior TDM or?
There was a requirement for one, but it never got implemented, as best as I understand.
Okay, so it's not enforceable until this new one is?
Well, they need a TDM plan as a part of the PC, and we would continue to pursue that regardless of the outcome of this application that's before you.
Great, that's what I wanted to get to. Any other details?
Yeah, in terms of specifics, the TDM plan intends to reduce the weekday peak hour vehicle trips by at least 20% through a variety of incentives, including carpooling incentives and transit subsidies. Yeah.
Okay.
I can get more specific. I wasn't sure if I needed to.
Maybe we could come back to it if I'm over my time. Thank you.
Councilmember Bert?
Thank you. Just following up on some of Councilmember Stone's questions. Director Late, you alluded to improved staff monitoring of conditions of approval, including TDM programs. Can you briefly say what are those improvements? What are we doing now that we didn't do before?
So one of the things that we're doing now is we're using our plan use database, Acela, to record the TDMs that get approved through the entitlement process into that system. That only gets us partly there. What we still need is a tickler system to remind us of the calendaring to come back and check on those annual plans. And that is something that I have on my to-do with our code enforcement team to set up that system and establish that.
So then, when that happens, you get the tickler. Does that mean you send code enforcement out? And what I actually want to ask about is, are we pursuing stronger self-certification by principals? As I've mentioned before, I spent 30 years in an industry where we had extensive and very demanding self-certification on environmental compliance. And we, as principals, had to certify on penalty of perjury. And at least in my company, we took that really seriously, and it diminished the amount of outside inspections that are needed, and you just get a high compliance rate, not a perfect one. And I've been concerned that for a long while we just haven't embraced that approach. It's not a cure-all, but it takes us long ways toward compliance.
Yeah, I agree. I see the value in having that kind of a system. I would want to understand what administrative authority we might have to implement that short of council direction through ordinance, for example. But would like to pursue that as something that we can take a look at, understanding that that would allow us to get those inputs without having to dedicate our code enforcement resources, which is who we would send out, given that those resources are limited.
That's exactly right. We just, we'd take from Peter to pay Paul because we just don't have unlimited code enforcement. In fact, we have inadequate staffing in many people's minds. And then we've had a problem with parking on El Camino Way. That, in addition to the parking on Wilkie, El Camino Way is a safe route to school. Employees at this location are not the only source of that parking. And I don't know that we really know the proportion that are attributable to this project. But with our El Camino bike lanes, one of the measures we've done is to provide VTA passes through Palo Alto TMA to all the low-income workers. And my understanding is it's the low-income workers of businesses directly on El Camino, not this street that is immediately adjacent and really competing for the same parking spaces. So I don't know if we can get an answer tonight, but I would like to find out whether we need to have any change in council direction to authorize. any change in council direction to authorize PATMA to be able to offer transit passes. And there are other tools to the workers on El Camino Way in addition to El Camino Real. And I don't know if you have any response or.
Only that we'd have to get back to the council on that.
Okay. Well, I, I think that'll be an important, that'd be part of a motion that I would be interested in no matter what project we approve tonight. Okay, that's it for me for the time being. Thank you.
Councilmember Lithgow-Hames.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I plus-one the idea of PATMA passes being given to Palo Alto Commons employees and others who are very adjacent to El Camino, if not directly on El Camino. To the applicant, if I may, Mr. Mayor, address a question to the applicant. At our last. He's gonna.
The applicant, come forward, please.
At our last session, one, you or one of your colleagues said in acknowledging some of the missteps, you said, we didn't realize we were under utilizing our parking until recently. And now more people have been given access to the garage with a key card, including staff, residents and visitors. You said you've hired a valet for eight hours a day to assist with parking. The community, however, continues to raise concerns about the veracity of those claims. There's a, there's one disabled parking spot in your front parking lot, the surface parking that often has a orange plastic bollard in front of it, which suggests no one's allowed to park here. I'm wondering why that would be there and how often, whatever, whatever the cause of that is, how often is it necessary to block the disabled parking spot?
I don't know. I'm not involved with the daily operations. But I can speak to what you started with, which was, who were my comments last time we were here, which was that the, you know, the, the parking garage was, it's been there for 35 years. There was never a parking policy. And what happened was a lot of it wasn't used. There were empty spaces. It sat empty, you know, all day, every day. And through this process and hearing from the neighbors, we've, we've implemented lots of policies. I included those in the letter that I sent to council last week. So we, we, we are for sure removing cars from wherever they were parking before and parking them on-site. As far as the handicap, I'm not too sure.
The, the handicap is almost always available. I just asked Lili, who's our executive director there. Specifically when a cone was there was when there was maintenance occurring. So they were either painting, restriping, when it was dry, the cone was gone. We have had construction going on where at times it has got a little congested, but when that's removed, that, that parking space is always available for handicap.
And thank you so much. The person you're referring to, Lili, is, are they here in the, in chambers? And, and does Lili represent the applicant? Are you comfortable with Lili answering that question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because I think what we're getting at here on this particular slice of the larger issue is an extended period of a lack of trust felt by some of your neighbors. And a worry that whatever is agreed upon tonight could be violated. And so this notion that there's now a disabled spot and it's available and yet it's not is causing members of the community to say, do we, can we trust them now? Given that there's a history of a lack of trust. So I've had community members tell me I've got photos after photos after photos of this bollard in front of that disabled spot, which and, and doesn't look like there are painting trucks around. It doesn't look like there's maintenance trucks around. Who knows? It's not a photograph of the entire area. Do you have a sense of why that spot is, has lately been blocked off a lot? And is that likely to continue?
Yes. So I do agree there, they were the times in the past that, as Steve just mentioned, during construction, because that was the loading zone for loading up the materials. Or sometimes could it be a, a trash picking, you know, on every Tuesday? So there were the reasons temporarily to keep that spot, you know, to put a cone there to prevent people coming in or the cars driving in. But, you know, since we are putting this as a part of the parking program and then it's my responsibility to keep educating my staff, including put this requirement into every each onboarding. When there's a new staff and a continued education to my staff and the daily inspection checked by the managed team. So work, we have a commitment to keep going on with this program to ensure the parking is always available to the public, public.
So were you saying that the maintenance vehicles might have parked in the disabled spot? And so you blocked it to protect it for someone who was disabled and needed it? I'm confused about why it needed to be protected with a bollard.
No, in the past, in the past, when we still undergoing with the construction, there were several times then when the, the big truck come over with unloading the material supplies. So for safety, we temporarily blocked that entries, entrance way. So it might be because, you know, the handicap just right at the entrance. So the, the orange cone was just right there. So we, we have never purposely occupied that parking spot because we understand that that's, that's a designated parking spot for, for ADA.
And the pictures I've seen have the, the pink, the orange bollard at the opening to the spot, not the entrance to the parking lot. So it does look like it is right there. Do not choose this spot. You have to choose the next spot or the next.
Yeah, well, I, again, I, I'm not sure when the picture was taken and in which day. You know, myself that I do my rounds very often, I do notice one time it's my maintenance because we often doing the painting in the front. And then that was the time he did a put a cone. I didn't notice right away and I told him not to put the cone in the middle. So really to my knowledge, that was the only one time that I've seen. Again, I just don't know when the picture was taken and for in which specific day. But again, moving forward that, you know, it is in our policy and we're making sure the handicap parking is always available.
Thank you for that. I know my time is up. I will just say the most recent picture I've seen was from this Saturday, three days ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have more, you can continue. Okay. Councilmember Recto.
I have a question about the staff report. You explained that you don't agree with the PTC decision and so you wrote the staff recommendation. Why does the staff report just concentrate on the staff and not give you two options? Say PTC did this and give two options as opposed to just writing up one solution, one option?
Yeah, thank you, councilmember. That's feedback that I've received regarding the staff report. And in hindsight, we probably should have expanded a little bit further on the PTC recommendation.
Yeah, because the PTC is a recommending body, right? And they did a lot of work on this. They really dug into it and they gave their opinion. And I would think that at least merits having a side-by-side comparison of this is what staff recommends, this is what PTC recommends.
Yep, understood.
Okay. And do we have a policy that going forward, we're going to, we saw this also a few weeks ago at Dark Skies. PTC made one recommendation and it was just kind of ignored in the staff.
Yeah, so I don't, there's no formal policy. I mean, we write staff reports that carry forward our staff professional opinion. And that's, I think what you, you pay us to do. I think what we can do better is bring forward the perspective of the, the boards and commissions that see these items. And so we're committed to doing that as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I want to hear what you guys think. You, you're professionals. We want to hear your opinion. But we also want to hear what the recommending bodies said do.
Yep, understood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmembers Stone and Burt asking a lot of the questions about the TDM that I had, so I can skip that. But I do have, you know, share the, the same thoughts about wanting there to be some sort of enforcement mechanism, fines, policies. I understand we don't have the, the, the staff to monitor closely. But I think that knowing that those are available would be important in this context. Just wanted to ask a couple of questions. One about the daylight plane and one about privacy. And, you know, in the staff report and in the comparison charts, I think it was attachment D. With respect to the daylight plane, which last time around was one of the bigger issues for me. And now talks about the proposed project complying. And I just wondered if staff could articulate a little bit because I think there's some, depending on what standard one uses from what time period, there's different views on that. But could you just explain for, for, for us in the public, your reasoning behind the compliance reference in the chart?
As this is a PC project, the adopted PC ordinance represents the development standards for the building and for the, for the property. The, the PC ordinance is the zoning and the existing building is the development standards. And as the documents for the original PC ordinance showed, the 45-degree daylight plane, it was determined that the daylight plane measured 10 feet from grade and at a 45-degree angle was the appropriate development standard for this PC ordinance and for this property as like its own zoning district essentially created by the PC.
Thank you. Because I, I will say that I believe applicant took note of our concerns and approved that daylight plane intrusion since the, the last time they were here. Is that correct? Not the last time, as in two weeks ago, but as in the time before that.
Yes, between when this project had a pre-screening and it's, I believe, initial PC or PTC meetings as well. The units on the second and third floors facing the neighbors have been pushed back a foot or two.
Thank you. And then with privacy, what I take from the staff report, it's like, I believe we landed on additional screening trees, less windows toward the back and higher window sills on the back. At one point, there was some suggestion of glazing. Is that happening? Do we know? And I could ask the applicant if, or is that beyond what has to be nailed down at this point?
Obscured glazing is a frequently used privacy technique, particularly when single-family houses are involved. It is one of a menu of options that are included in the multifamily objective design standards, which the Architectural Review Board was comparing the units presented hereto for the purpose of privacy only. And other options from that menu of options were chosen. So no obscured glazing is included in this project or considered necessary for privacy.
Great. I'm actually really glad to hear that. I mean, seniors are confined to their rooms. And oftentimes, I know with my parents, birds watching, watch, my mom liked the contrails from the plane. I, I, I'm, I'm glad to hear that other options were chosen. So thank you. That's all I have for now.
Okay, I, I have a number of questions, mostly for the applicant. Take the, take the stage again, please. So you decided not to build out the front side. And what was the basis of that decision? Because that obviously would have obviated any of these problems on the backside.
You mean not going on a, in a fourth floor?
Of just of, of building out or towards the front and/or the side?
So some of these units, I think six or seven of the units are on the front. There, there's some over by the Goodwill and some over by the, adjacent to the Avant. So those, those are still in the proposal. And there's, there's not any more space for where we could do it in the, in the front.
Okay, my second question is coupled to that, which is, did you have any discussions with Goodwill to just acquire that property? And could have put up more than 16 there?
10 or 15 years ago and they had zero interest.
But you don't know if they have any interest now?
I, I don't know.
Okay, that's kind of odd. What, what's the range of rates for these health units now? I'm, I'm a former customer by virtue of my wife's aunt and I was there, spent a lot of time there over years. At the time, this was about 10 years ago, it was about $10,000 a month. It's probably gone up since then for full care. Is that, is that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, it depends. I'll let someone else answer that. Who knows specifically? It, it depends very much on the amount of care they receive, of course.
Yeah, that's why I asked for a range, so I would get the full picture.
So the range of the rent there is from a studio and can be from a $6,800 per month to a large, a two-bedroom, two-bathroom, which that can be $15,000 per month.
Right. And that is also going to go up from either one of those, depending on the amount of care, as your colleague just said.
Yes, correct, correct.
Okay. And when you were, you put up the Avant next door, I think I'm back to the, Mr. Reller. How many units are over there?
Forty-four independent living units.
Yeah, I've been in that facility as well. Was there any consideration to putting any of these type of units in the Avant at all?
Assisted living units?
Yeah, yeah.
No, we, we kind of kept that all separate as an independent.
Okay. So then the comment you just made here this evening, that you probably are not as interested or maybe not all interested in, in the smaller number of units. My quick calculations at 15,000 would be, that's like a, almost a million three per year in revenue. So I mean, that, that's a business decision, but you multiply that over the years and there's some decent revenue there. So I would encourage you to consider that if that's the direction that we go tonight. Let's see, in, in your case, I know that there wasn't a prioritization of Palo Alto residents. Was that, what's your comment on that? Was it just?
Did you say priority?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. You know, those issues that and some others were brought up that were part of the original PC. I was 18 or 17 when that was approved. So, and I, I think, I don't know, most of those policies I think were more or less forgotten about. I don't, I don't, you know, the city hasn't asked for reports and they haven't been given. And, and we've had a, you know, an executive director that retired. So I don't really, don't have a great answer, but.
From a perspective though, of how many residents are directly connected to Palo Alto, either Palo Alto residents or their children, 80% of the residents, either their children or they're themselves are residents of Palo Alto. So it's, it's highly prioritized. It is serving the Palo Alto community.
It sounds like that was pretty random though, compared to what your colleague just said. But it wasn't, it wasn't.
I was just talking about those policies from 1988. And so there is no policy to prioritize Palo Alto residents. But the fact is, is it does serve Palo Alto residents. There's, there's always some level of vacancy. It's been very full for most of 35 years. But any Palo Alto resident is welcome to move in there tomorrow. And that's always been the case.
Yeah. Okay, that's it for my questions. Do my colleagues have any other comments or want another round? Otherwise I have some other things to say, but just. Go ahead. Yeah, sure.
I, I realized I did have another question and more on the technical side. In reading through some of the residents' concerns on Wilkie, there was a question about the exterior paint. And the request that the paint of the exterior be a green or a brown to mimic or reflect or fit in with the, the trees that are in their backyards and your backyard. And yet the project proposes a khaki and a blue and a white. I'm just wondering if changing the exterior color has, in accordance with the requests of the neighbors behind you, has been considered?
I'm not sure, but we would consider that. That would be, that would be okay with us to change those colors.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all?
I think that, I'm just checking my notes. Sorry, they're long. Yeah, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Burt, and then I'll have some comments.
Yes, I wanted to understand whether it's the proposal before us, and I didn't catch it in the, in the actual ordinance. Whether the past conditions of approval, whether it's the, the, the parking conditions or the Palo Alto preference, would those carry forward?
Yes, the existing PC ordinance as well as the ordinance for the Avant are adopted by reference.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so looking at sort of what to do here. Okay, so looking at sort of what to do here. You know, this is a PC project still, and that means it's discretionary as long as there is some public benefit. That new benefit has to be weighed and balanced against any detriments. So it's sort of a cost benefit analysis in the broadest sense, not just costs. And our task tonight, as we noted last week, was is quasi judicial, which means we have to act as judges on this matter. So the benefit here from the applicant is defined as sixteen additional, I'll call them medical units, because until tonight, I was told that they're not actually housing units from a REIT's standpoint. And they're definitely not senior affordable housing, that's for sure. So what we're dealing with, with the the substance here is we're dealing with a deal that's been on the table since nineteen eighty-seven. And that was negotiated between the applicant and the residents. And and now the developer's asking for for sixteen more, and this is not about, do we need more medical units? We need more medical units, hospital units, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. It's just a question of what's appropriate right here. So I first look at, you know, what's changed in the neighborhood over that many years? And remarkably, remarkably, nothing. I mean, almost all the same residents are still living there. And what's changed with the developer you we we've heard about, which is that they're doing fine, put in another senior building next door, which leveraged the PC zoning there. It's it's only ten feet away. The Avant is only ten feet away from the back fence of some of those neighbors, but that was that was perfectly legal, so. And we've we've heard from residents and neighbors about the issues with employee parkings and preferences and the responsiveness or lack thereof from the from management. And we heard that they didn't even look at recently going over to Goodwill again. So there's no quantitative analysis required for a PC. If there were, I guess we could match the sixteen requested units with the fourteen families, but that probably means thirty to sixteen. And so we're not going to use that, but even in a quantitative analysis, I think you would probably wait the the residents who have been there with for thirty-eight years under the same deal. And, you know, we have a bit of a stake in the in the in our own city credibility here because we signed the deal and and here it is. So personally, personally, I think the PTC came up with a a very good position in their recommendation to put the seven units in the rear of the of the project. The residents already compromised and we're promised by the developer that that was it. So now we're going to go a little bit past that, but I'd be prepared to make a specific motion if the clerk would put it up, please. And that is that we approve the the seven units that are away from the rear neighbors, create a tighter TDM program to ensure compliance and document the process and penalties for non-compliance, and to institute and enforce this first priority for occupants who are PA residents and specifically define this, including length of prior residency, maybe minimum of a year. So it's not just like I moved in yesterday, therefore I'm a Palo Alto resident, and maybe this isn't even a big issue, but this would this would address that. So I think, you know, for critics of this approach or the concern of the applicant, I just, I suggest that the the cup is sort of half full compared to where you are right now by being able to put these things in. And you can promise, you can, you can put in new units, even though there was a promise of the residents that there wouldn't be put in. So that's, I think, a fair position to to come out to adjudicate all the myriad of problems here. Do you have it up? Let's see, Councilmember Stone has light on. I understand that. I'm just trying to make sure we get the gist of what the issue is here. Yes, we would have to, we have to change, we'd have to add the exemption from CECL, which is which is in one. And the ordinance wouldn't be as in attachment B, it would be with these changes. And then the appropriate land use action. So if there's a second, we can ask the city attorney for more legality on that, but if there's not, then there's not.
I'll second.
Okay, and did you want to comment?
I I think you summarized it well. And for me, it's not an issue about whether we should have an assisted living facility or not. It already exists and has been serving our community well for many years, but really, it's whether the expansion of the project by sixteen units is a sufficient enough public benefit to offset the impacts on surrounding neighbors. And for me, it's really a balancing act. I don't think it's all or nothing, despite the the applicant's initial concerns. I think of this is, I think this is what's available to them, with the mayor doing the the math off the top of your head, over a million dollars in revenue every year. I hope they will find this a something valuable to to do. So I mean, I think this will help create seven new housing units for future residents, but preserving privacy interests, rights to natural sunlight for existing residents and and fix some of the the parking issues as as well. So I I think this, I think this meets that balancing act that we're trying to achieve here. I guess one question for for staff, and I know we're going to get some some feedback from from legal as well. But away from rear neighbors, is that clear enough? Should we specify from Wilkie Way?
I I think maybe a reference to the Planning and Transportation Commission recommendation, which I think documented which units were being supported would be an appropriate reference.
That that works for me if the.
So in item one, it would be as referenced by PTC. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think maybe just as a an initial frame, item one, one might be move the staff report with the following changes. And one of the first changes would be to implement the the PTC recommendation for the seven units. That would be, and then we can get on to the other ones, too, but that's, that would capture that.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that. I like that change. And I I also think this is a very different analysis, and this is kind of part of my my question. I assume there's no affordability requirement for projects like this, right? None of these are going to be restricted for for low income. If if that was on the table, I think that that changes an analysis and maybe be more open to that. There is more of a public benefit. But again, trying to balance that public benefit, I think this strikes that balance between the need for more of these types of housing units with the need for the for the direct neighbors who have already been impacted by this for a long time. And I think generally have been very open to this type of compromise. And so I think this preserves the peace in the neighborhood, so everybody can be able to enjoy and enjoy this community for years to come.
We still need some more legal language on there, probably, but let's just see who others comments. Councilmember Lou.
I just want to loop back to a potential question to staff. But maybe before that, so I do worry about setting precedents in both directions. We can't change the deal on agreements that the city has made implicitly or explicitly. But we also need to realize that parking and light and shadows will change along El Camino and other parts of the city as well with our housing element and with our plans for growth. So going back to a question about whether there are any units that would fit within the thirty degree setback, do we have any potential information there? The logic is that the seven units, you can add and not meaningfully change the deal for residents. And I'm just not sure, I see within the setback, like second and third floor units, that there are other sets of units that are not kind of up against the edge of the daylight plane, but tucked even further back. And I'm just wondering what the status of those units might look like approximately, if not, you know, if we don't have exact data about the daylight plane.
Yes, so based on cross referencing the current plan set tonight with an older version of the plan set that showed the three-ten daylight plane in addition to the forty-five degree daylight plane, I do not believe that any of the new proposed units facing Wilkie Way would comply with that lower daylight plane. However, as you noted, the seven, so yeah, the seven units in the PTC recommendation that was a part of Mayor Lauing's motion do not affect the daylight plane and or do not represent an encroachment into the daylight plane because it they are not being added to a property line where a daylight plane applies. The only property line where the daylight plane applies is the one facing the Wilkie Way neighbors. And to answer your question, all of those proposed units would protrude into a three-ten daylight plane if that were to be applied.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baker? Sorry, Vice Mayor Baker.
I'll answer to anything. I'm just trying to remember, and I'm sorry, I I can't find it in the old staff report, and too much has happened in between. Whether the applicant had expressed an opinion about the about the economics of the seven unit, might have a vague memory that it there were some negatives there, and I don't know if that's something that through the mayor I could ask, or if it's if staff knows it's of record somewhere.
What's the question, actually?
The question is, is it, is it economically feasible, does it pencil, however you want to phrase it, to do the seven instead of the greater number, sixteen units?
Oh. Didn't they already answered that earlier? I'm happy to have you answer that if you like, but.
The question?
Could you just repeat what apparently you said earlier about the the pencilability of the seven units versus sixteen?
Well, it's, you know, it's the economics of mobilization and and construction of just just that many units makes it, there there are certain fixed costs and those don't change. And so we determined that the the seven units alone didn't doesn't pencil. Standing up here now, I feel like this isn't going our direction. So I have an idea that I haven't talked to any of my compadres about, but which would help on privacy, it doesn't do anything on parking, but as I've said before, these units create virtually zero additional cars. I mean, it's not zero, but it's a couple. It's not going to add parking to the neighborhood. What we've done in the parking garage already has reduced it. But I would propose thirteen units, and the three that we would remove would be the third floor units facing the Wilkie neighbors. I think there's actually six, but three of them are are very far setback. They're not a, they're not a privacy issue as much at least. So.
Okay.
Thank you, because I heard the mayor talk about the increased revenue, but I wanted to, I wondered if you were going to go forward or not, if it was limited to seven. So, all right, thank you.
Other comments?
Councilmember. Yeah, well, we just had on the fly a revised proposal, and I'd be interested in hearing what folks think about it.
Which folks? These folks or those folks?
Counsel.
Councilmember Baker.
Well, well, this folks is more interested in it than the seven. I I guess for me, you know, while I expressed a lot of concern about, you know, daylight plane is my issue. You know, I, so I live in a single family residence, but when my neighbors went up to a second story, they could see into my yard, they watched us barbecue, or maybe they don't, maybe we're not that interesting. I can see into theirs. They're not that interesting, so I I don't look. But was I thrilled when they went up and could see? Was I thrilled that a little of my daylight plane got? No, but it was the rules. And so, you know, that's what they did. And I just feel like that's, you know, analogous here under these these new rules. I understand there's a deal cut at some point. But I I I just, I I I tend to think that the the other units are, like, I like the larger number of units, but I think this thirteen is quite interesting because it does give much closer to the sixteen. It sounds like the applicant is interested. And so I would be supportive of that.
Councilmember Stone?
Well, I'm curious about the thirteen units. I don't, I would not be in a place to support it tonight. I'd want to hear what the residents think. I want to see what, I'd want to see what that plan looks like. I think that would need to go back to the PTC, and so I'm I'm open to that, but I wouldn't be able to make a decision tonight. I mean, I'm, I'm fine if we want to put forward this motion and include, you know, and possibly include that. If that falls, that falls apart, then this is, then this is the plan. So open to it, but not willing to make a decision tonight on it.
So just, so just restating, you would stay with the current motion and the second. But if it goes this direction and and the applicant wants to come back with an alternative instead of that, then it goes through the process again. Is that essentially it?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Lithgow Hames, I think is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of what we folks up here feel, I am in favor of exploring the thirteen because I'm in favor of more units generally. I am frustrated that the applicant didn't take our direction from the last session to put all of their additional units on the El Camino wayside. A number of us did express that request, and we didn't hear that in any thoughtful manner at the last session. I have tremendous respect for the neighbors. I've walked through their backyards. I've, I feel that the greatest concern, the daylight plane, the daylight studies have been extensive and show minimal change, and only in the winter months at that. If daylight plane is more or less put to rest, then I think it's parking and the significant breach of trust that this community has experienced at the hands of this applicant and wanting to ensure a monthly compliance or some kind of much tighter compliance with our expectations in in the manner of reporting on the part of the applicant on a very regular basis to ensure that whatever is agreed to this time around is actually adhered to. I want to see the Palo Alto residents' preference added and the rear paint color choice change to what the neighbors are comfortable with. I really do feel like we're in striking distance of a compromise that results in a greater number of medical beds, units, what have you, which we, you know, our seniors very much need. I just lost my eighty-six-year-old mother, who was in a facility for a short period of time. It didn't turn out to be a good fit. But I have, you know, I've seen firsthand how how essential these communities are to our families and and to our neighbors and in our communities. So I am in favor of the larger number of units if these other aspects are are also met.
Councilmember Rectal?
Question for staff. I'm looking at the map here. The parking lot is significant size, parking lot in front, sorry. The parking lot is pretty significant size. Are they required to have a parking lot? Or are they just required to have certain parking spaces? There's, there's no mandate that they they keep that parking lot?
I actually believe that because this is an assisted living facility, they do have certain access requirements for.
they do have certain access requirements for, like, having the driveway so that emergency vehicles can pull within a certain distance of the front door. But that is separate from your question about the parking requirement.
Yeah, because when I'm looking at the map, it's like seven thousand square feet in the parking lot. And even a small portion of that going up three or four stories, that would be a significant number of units. I still think there's room up front for additional units on the El Camino wayside. I wish that had been more thoroughly examined.
Councilmember Lou?
Thank you. I am very intrigued by the thirteen-unit concept. But I'm not sure about the timelines and whether that would truly need to come to PTC and have a fully set of revised plans, or whether that is something that we could hear on a more flexible or more rapid basis, just in the same sense that we can make decisions ourselves about seven units versus sixteen. What else would the applicant need to do, basically, to come to us and propose an option for thirteen?
So a couple things. Just to answer your question, you could decide that you don't want to make a decision on the project tonight and ask the applicant to explore this concept. And then we would come back to the city council when we have an available, when we have the revisions and an available slot on your agenda. I'll note our quick look at the plans. We don't, the math isn't adding up for us. Based on the number of units that are on the third floor, if we're eliminating additions on the third floor, we come to eleven units, not thirteen. But that might be part of some of the work that needs to be sorted out.
I think two of the third-floor units, I, maybe the intent was that those would be facing the avant or facing interior.
Well.
I would, or was that not the, oh, you're saying that even with that? Right.
I guess what I don't want to do tonight is try to redesign the project for the sixteen units, especially when you've got another item on the agenda that's going to yield hundreds of units potentially.
Okay. So i-if we make a decision tonight, or does it make a difference if we make a decision tonight versus if we punt it to a date where the applicant can return and explore the thirteen?
You would just give the direction to explore a revised project that achieves your goals of not having units facing Wilkie Way or not on the third floor, whatever it might be. And then they would either pursue that with revised plans, and when we get that, we'll study that and bring it back to the city council.
Okay, and would that be included in the motion, preferably?
Not that detail, no. It's with the council now, so you can give direction to staff and the applicant, or, you know, you can, you can express your interest, and then the applicant could decide to pursue that or abandon the project if they wanted to, or or come back and say, no, we're not able to do that.
I just procedurally, I don't understand why that's any different than voting on the, on the motion. If the motion is passed, it's passed, and then they can decide what they want to do. And if it's defeated, it's defeated, and it's over.
The difference, Mayor, would be that you've taken an action on the entitlement, and at that point, then it's an amendment. And it does, there's, I guess, two things that could happen. One is it opens up that process of going back through a, the process that they just had gone through over the X number of months.
Years.
Alternatively, and I, given the controversy with this project, I don't advocate for this, but you could give the director some level of authority to approve an increase between seven and eleven or thirteen units, if it met certain stipulated requirements. I just think that has the potential to backfire, just given the public scrutiny on it.
Okay, thank you for that thorough answer.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest putting you in that position. But I worry that if we just definitively close out this item tonight, then if they did come forward with thirteen, there would be a pre-screen PTC, ARB, PTC, and it could be several months, even if it's, even if they just amend the plans and submit it tomorrow, it would still be probably several months before it comes back to us. So I would actually prefer to delay this item to a date uncertain when we can actually consider the thirteen units. Assuming we can't get alignment on the thirteen units tonight, if we can, I'm really happy to discuss that, but I sense that is hard.
I'm skeptical of the thirteen units. PTC looked at this over and over again, and it's just not the third-floor units that are bad. I mean, some of these first-floor units are right there, they're ten feet away. And, you know, on paper, this looks really good. In the last two years, I've spent so much time in assisted-living facilities, I personally understand the importance of this. And so on paper, this looked good, and I was thought very supportive of it. And when I went and visited the site, it's, the current building is very imposing from those backyards. And it's, it's right there, and moving even closer will make it even more imposing. So I'm skeptical, I support the PTC, I think that they've scrubbed it, and I think moving away and even more, if they can get more on El Camino side, I think that's that's fertile ground. I don't think there's fertile ground for squeezing more towards on the Wilkie side.
I think Councilmember Burt is next.
So I appreciate that there, if we looked at something with reduced units, we have two issues, one, the tallest units and the daylight plane, which it would reduce the impacts as a result of the proximity to the backyards, it wouldn't. Through the mayor, if I might ask, a follow-up of the applicant?
Sure.
And so the question, I had the same question that I think Director Late alluded to. Aren't there five units up against the Wilkie fences? And so how does three take care of the problem?
And I was saying that from memory, I think that's right. There's, my understanding was there, my recollection is that there's six along the Wilkie Way, and that three of those are much further setback than the other ones. The intent would be the ones that are, that are closer, whatever that means. Again, I know that's hard to make a decision on that right now, but that those would be removed.
All right, thank you. Well, I'll just also say that I think everybody involved in this was hoping that we were at a point of a resolution, and we could go forward with the motion. But I think that the, and I wish the applicant had come forward with this compromise sooner. But it's a very interesting compromise. I don't know for certain, once it gets thoroughly examined, how well to address the problems. I, I don't assume it addresses a hundred percent of the neighbors' problems, but we have, we have parking issues, we have trip issues, and then we have issues of the units being up with both daylight, plain, and proximity to the neighbors. And I, I think what we have as the, on the alternative is three of those four issues. Pretty resolved, the proximity, not. How would we feel about that as a compromise? I personally want to see it flushed out, and I think it may be a reasonable compromise that would not make any of the parties tickle pink, but, but I think is very intriguing. And so let me ask Director Late, if we were to try to get this, you know, back through PTC with the revised proposal along the lines we just discussed. People talk about a couple months, I'm not that optimistic. How rapidly could we get it back for final consideration?
So I guess the process I was considering would not have it go back to the Planning and Transportation Commission, but I hear that that's what you're including in the, in your thought process.
Yeah, I'd be open either way, I was assuming it would, but go ahead.
So I would say that the PTC part probably adds, you know, two to three months to the process. And I'd say it's a comparable amount for council. So I think if you have the two, you're, we're looking at by the end of the year, assuming we got plans.
So basically, around six months. You know, I wish it would be able to come back sooner, but we've been at this project for several years. Like I said, everybody would like to see a decision made. But I, I will move a substitute motion to refer this back to the PTC for a to review a project between eleven to thirteen units that would eliminate the third-floor units adjacent to the Wilkie backyards.
Is there any second for that one? No second.
Can we, can we see it up on the screen?
I'll second it also. Okay, and speaking to that second, I think we I agree with all of Councilmember Burt's logic about how we should consider that option now that the project really is so close and almost ready for us to consider that option, but it just isn't ready for tonight. I think I am still a little bit unsure about the part about referring to the PTC versus this just coming back. But I think I'm happy to hear any more thoughts from Councilmember Burt or others about that. I generally support the spirit of the motion.
Councilmember Lithcot-Hames?
Thank you, I appreciate the spirit of the motion. I was one who, when Director Late said, you know, it's maybe not be advisable, but you could just refer to me, to the director, to work this out. Maybe not advisable, given the community concerns. On the other hand, I think you know precisely what the concerns are, and figuring out the most nimble way to get us to the most number of units that addresses the neighbors' concerns is, I think, what we all want, as expediently as possible. I'm in favor of anything that gets us to a resolution quicker for the sake of the applicant and the neighbors and the residents who ultimately live there, and the city, and all the other processes that are not happening because this one is in the pipeline. So whatever is the most expedient is, you know, and still a quality process is what I'm in favor of. And I do feel very comfortable vesting that authority in the director. But if there isn't agreement on that, then I would, you know, I will support this motion, the substitute motion.
Okay, clearly, I'm not going to support the substitute motion. I don't agree with that analysis at all. We were debating whether to do all kinds of numbers, and as you said, the applicant didn't come back with any, other than if we didn't get seventeen, we're going to do none. We're now debating, this whole debate now, and waiting six months is over three incremental units. And I think we've kind of already made our peace with the neighbors in terms of getting them to be acceptable to the ones that are on the front. So I think we're just, you know, burning up a lot of time in the, in the hopes that we can find three. But we're talking about this even without whiteboarding it, so we don't know what it looks like or anything like that. So I think we're better off just voting on the other original motion, and then if they want to come back to us, they can do that. Don't see any others, oh. No, Vice Mayor Baker, I think, right? Okay.
So first, I just wanted to address Councilmember Lou's question on why the PTC. I don't think that the council is the right forum to do the full vetting of a revised project, both from an efficiency standpoint and from a focus that the PTC has. And then second, it's, it's not three units, it's three to five units is what is, would be reexamined. Just to correct that for the record. Three, reducing it by three to five units is my understanding.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Yeah. I generally am plus-one to the comments that Councilmember Lithcot-Hames just made, but I understand the procedural comments that Councilmember Burt just made, and I think the PTC is better situated to deal with this. But Director Late, I know you gave a rough time estimate if we did this before, but could you repeat that for me? I'm needing repeating tonight.
Sure, no, I would say about four to six months, depending on from the point that we get a complete set of revised plans.
I see, until it would be back here, having gone through PTC?
Yes.
Okay. Understood. Okay, well, I think this is, again, plus-one to what was said before. If we can find a way to get the most units in a way that addresses most of the neighbors' concerns. And I think a lot of it's going to be in, you know, rebuilding trust month by month as these, the TDMs and all the other things and the Palo Alto preferences are lived into. And I think we can't legislate that, but we can certainly ask that. I'm hearing receptivity to that, and so I'm supportive of this approach.
Any other comments? Okay, so on the substitute, substitute motion, the city clerk call a roll.
Councilmember Lithcot-Hames?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektall?
No.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Mayor Lauing?
No.
Councilmember Stone?
No.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Motion carries four to three. Substitute motion carries four to three.
Okay, so that concludes the item for tonight. The colleagues want to take a break? Anybody want to take a break? Oh, I think he is too. Yeah. So you have to announce, no. No, we're not taking, we're not taking a break. Is that what you're looking at me for? We're not taking a break.
No, I think there are three of us who will take a break.
That's right. I was just, I was just going to let the crowd thin out here in it. Okay, we are taking up our last action item for the evening. That is item number seven, Anordinance on Palo Alto Municipal Code Title eighteen. Again, and four E housing element, and a lot of other goodies that Director Late has for us. So we do have some recusals on this item tonight, so if councilmembers would take the mic and announce your recusals?
Okay, I would like to recuse as I have the real property interest within five hundred square feet of the El Camino focus area discussed, both proposed and existing.
Okay.
And I also will recuse myself because I continue to do, to serve as outside patent counsel to Stanford, who has an interest in the land.
And I will also
One staff member.
Thank you, I will also recuse from this item, recognizing my spouse is employed by Stanford Medical Center, which FPPC has concluded represents a conflict of interest.
Okay. Yeah, Director Late, don't leave. Okay, are you ready for the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to invite Gene Eisberg from Lexington Planning, who has been involved in these code updates from the inception of the initial housing focus area, as well as the objective standards that these are also based on as part of the code review. Ms. Eisberg has a presentation to share, and will be available to answer questions afterwards. Ms. Eisberg?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lowing and members of the council. Tonight, we're talking about the El Camino Real Focus Area. Next slide. This program started and was adopted in January 2024, and it allows an increase in development standards in exchange for providing 20% of residential units on site for lower-income households. It developed as an alternative to builder's remedy projects that were coming up and an alternative to state density bonus law. Next slide. In the particular area where it's located, there've been several builder's remedy applications along with other multifamily and affordable and office developments proposed. Next slide, please. So the Housing Element had a program that adopted the original focus area as part of the rezonings that were done a year ago to meet the regional housing needs assessment. The Housing Element had a second program that anticipated further changes in the focus area to consider additional geographies and to look at the development standards and see if there was any changes that needed to be made. And so that's the what's in front of you tonight is the second part of the program, 3.4E. Next slide, please. So the proposal is in the draft ordinance is to expand the focus area, to make some changes to development regulations, and then update the affordable housing requirements based on some changes in state law. Next slide, please. In pink here on the screen, you can see the proposed additions to the focus area. This includes sites around California Avenue, as well as two builder's remedy projects on the southern end of the corridor here. The PTC and the ARB supported further expansions beyond these sites, but really, this, the program and the housing element is fairly limited, and so further expansions in general would need to be a part of a future action. Next slide, please. Additionally, and you see this in an attachment to the staff report, we do have a property owner that's requested to be included in the focus area at 2951 El Camino. The site and the sites around it were subject to a pre-screening a few years ago. This didn't move forward as one of the, what we call the Tier One sites, which were the most, had the highest potential for development and most appropriate for these higher development standards, because these sites are adjacent to R1 zoning districts, and because currently there are three different parties that own these three sites. However, there are still negotiations happening, and as you can see in the attachment, there is a request by this property owner to be included, and if the council chose to do that, this site could be included and covered by the program and the housing element and the SECO analysis. Next slide. I mentioned there's also changes to development standards. So at the top end, we're still looking at a maximum of 4.0 FAR, 85-foot height limit. However, working with the ARB and PTC, you see these two tiers depending on the lot size, and part of this is to incentivize lot consolidation. The sites that are proposed to be included in the focus area, in particular around California Avenue, are smaller, and so to take advantage of these higher development standards, you really need a larger site to allow, particularly for parking circulation, but to allow the site to handle more development. And so that's how you see this lot size tiering here. Next slide, please. Additionally, several changes to building massing and facade articulation, removing the height transition requirement, but modifying the daylight plane and the upper story step back. So on the next slide, you can see graphically some of these changes. So the height transition, the stair step, is proposed to be removed. It really was too limiting to development, and instead, we're considering a change to the daylight plane. The way it is today, the daylight plane depends on the base district and depends on the adjacent district, and so there's no hard and fast rule today because the focus area refers to base standards. The proposal in the draft ordinance indicates a 45-degree daylight plane, starting at 16 feet. You can see on the slide, this was a place where the PTC had a split motion, recommending either a 45-degree plane or a steeper 30-degree plane. Next slide, please. So in addition to that consideration, also proposed change in the upper story step backs. This is on the front side of the building. Currently, there's an average step back requirement of 20 feet and a minimum of 6 feet, and this is proposed to be simplified and reduced to a 10-foot minimum step back. So you still have some relief from that massing on the front side of the building, but not as much. Next slide, please. You'll also see in the public comment from Stanford and from the property owner at 3300 El Camino, a request to reduce the special step back that's shown on the zoning map. This is a 50-foot step back, setback throughout the research park and the Stanford-owned properties, and the idea when this was created was to allow for potential changes to future circulation, road widening, or additional transportation improvements such as bicycle facilities or pedestrian facilities. However, in this location, this does constrain this potential development, especially in light of the fact that there's also a utility easement crossing through this property. Next slide. In addition to that identified compliance concern, we did talk to all of the developers who proposed under builder's remedy, talked to other property owners in the corridor, and so here you can see the standards that either would need to be changed in those applications that have already been submitted or adjusted in the city's standards in order to have compliance and consistency between what the developers are requesting in their applications and what the zoning ordinance is allowing. Next slide. In terms of process, there are two options that developers and applicants can pursue under the focus area. They can either propose the projects to meet objective design standards, and those projects would be subject to just one study session with the ARB through the city's streamlined review process, or they can choose to meet the more subjective context-based design criteria and then go through architecture review. Next slide. So there's also proposed changes to the affordable housing requirement, and this is because at the start of this year, a new state law went into effect that reduced the builder's remedy affordability requirement from 20% to this tiered series of options. So a development can choose whether to meet the builder's remedy through 7%, extremely low, 100% moderate, or what's shown here in between. So this just applies to projects that have already been submitted. Excuse me, the proposed draft ordinance makes this change to be consistent with the state law, and so it proposes that the projects that have already submitted under builder's remedy could meet the, one of these options other than the 20% lower income. However, other projects in the future that submit under the focus area standards would continue to need to meet this 20% lower income requirement. Next slide. Additionally, the draft ordinance does allow for exemptions from development impact fees for low-income units, as long as they're at least 20% of units proposed at lower income rates. Next slide. So just to sum up in the staff recommendation, looking for your feedback on the changes to development regulations, the proposed expansion areas, including that request from the North Ventura property owner, feedback on the affordable housing requirements, and then any feedback on the specific standards, including the daylight plane where the PTC had a split motion and the special step box on Hanson Way, and then looking for your consideration on the ordinance. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I know there has just been immense amount of work that went into this from Director Late and the staff, and it just, it shows in what you have here and the quality of the report as well. So thanks for that, and it's very important to address demands from the housing developers that want to expand this program. So it's a good feeling that there's success already in what we've got going. So we can come up here for your questions or comments with the fearsome five of us that are left. My understanding, City Attorney, is that we still need to have a four vote, right? So pardon me? It has to be at least four votes.
That's correct. Passage of an ordinance requires a minimum of four votes, regardless of the recusals.
Right. So I just want to have that clear upfront. So folks that want to address staff or make a comment. Yeah, okay. Councilmember Burt?
Yeah, are we doing questions then?
That's fine, yeah. If the questions are quick, which they may be, then we'll just.
You said questions or.
I know. That revision is fine, is what I'm saying. We'll just do questions.
So first, I was looking at the incentives for lot consolidation in 85 feet. Kind of a point of reference I have is the Excel project on the McDonald's and Fish Market site on the, a claim, excuse me. And what's the height and the FAR of that project, do you know?
Yeah, so I believe it's relatively consistent with the housing focus area of about 4.0 and 85 feet, up to 85 feet in height. You're referring to 3150 El Camino Real?
Yeah, if we could confirm that. I had in the back of my head it was a little less than in height and a little less.
Yeah, we can get the numbers. Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like 79 feet and 4.0 FAR.
Oh, 4.0 FAR. Okay, thank you. So given that that's 79 feet, and that's how many stories?
I think it's seven.
Yeah, that sounds right, yeah. So why are we saying 85 feet?
Ms. Eisberg, want to?
Part of the reason is that sometimes we see a taller first floor, especially if there's retail development on the first floor, a 10-foot floor is not going to be tall enough. So it's typically on that bottom floor. We also sometimes see with mechanical parking lifts, you need a little bit more height if it's not below grade parking and the proposing mechanical lifts. So it's really about that first, first and second level as opposed to the higher.
Are we exempting these housing focus sites from ground floor retail?
No, the focus area does not do that. So basically, whatever is required by the base district. In general, retail isn't necessarily the required by the base district, but the retail preservation ordinance could go into effect. So there's other, or they just might propose retail as part of the development.
But, yeah, but it's not required. They could be 100% housing developments.
Well, I'm good with giving them 85 feet if they have retail, but I don't know why we give them 85 feet if they don't have retail. So that's a question I will have, and I think that we could probably sculpt the ordinance to simply say that, and in doing so, we do some, give some incentive to retail. Not everybody's going to take it, but we want to incentivize a number of things. We want to incentivize lot consolidation, we want to incentivize affordable housing, and we want to incentivize retail. So let's build that in. And then on the Hanson setback, was it staff's recommendation that we retain some, not the 50-foot setback, but something less than that? Is that correct?
Yeah, so this one really is a policy question. We don't have any specific plans that are identified. I don't think it's necessarily prudent to completely wipe out that special setback because we don't know what the future is, but in conversations with staff, you know, 25 feet or is something that staff thinks would be acceptable. I believe the representative for that leased property is advocating for 20. I don't have any data to say why 20 or not 25.
Okay, thanks. And lastly, on the Tier Two properties, 2905, 2951, and 2999 El Camino, the, you mentioned that there's a property immediately behind, I guess it's the 2951 and 2999, that is zoned R1, but my understanding is it's been occupied commercial. If we were to support rezoning of that, would it, it would be rezoning to R2, or what zoning would it be upgraded to? Because that would presumably be the transition property between the higher density on El Camino and the single family that goes beyond that parcel.
Right. I don't believe we've done the analysis to determine what that zoning would become in the eventuality of a project. I think this is where the Planning and Transportation Commission had expressed an interest in wanting to explore the options there, but in the absence of having that application before them, there wasn't a desire to incorporate it into the Tier One.
Okay, so tonight, we could give direction to pursue rezoning and request the PTC to come up and staff to come up with what would be the appropriate zoning to achieve the transition?
Yeah, either that or through the council's dialogue, open, create the invitation for the property owner to submit that text amendment application.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rektal?
My questions are asked. Thank you.
Asked and answered, huh?
Yes.
I had a few questions on the letter from Creekside, just as a general, not just because they're asking it, but the first one had to do with averaging the encroachment on the daylight planes. What would be the process to even do that? Seems like we'd be doing math calculations, and wouldn't the implications be that we wouldn't be able to predict? Well, I won't answer my own question. What would be the process for how you'd go about averaging it? Would it be?
We've not identified what that process would be.
All right. So could you say if it's complicated or simple or somewhere in between?
I haven't spent any time contemplating what an averaging scenario would look like.
Okay. And I also didn't understand in that letter what was discussed with respect to having an open space credit? I don't know if that was ever discussed at PTC or by staff.
Yeah, I don't believe it was. I think that is a recognition of some, and I see the representative in the audience, so they'll probably speak to this, but a recognition of some creek restoration work that's being done and presumably some interest in wanting to tie that open space requirement into that space.
Okay, and then just a second question on Hanson Way. I think PTC didn't, according to the staff report, PTC didn't weigh in on it because they wanted a Stanford input and our own transportation department input, and I think we've got Stanford, but we don't have our own transportation department yet.
So we did speak with the Office of Transportation, and at this time, there's just not a recommendation on what a reduction, if any reduction, should be.
Okay. Anyone else with questions? Councilmember Lithcot-Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just going through my notes here to see what's been covered. I want to be on the record as saying I'm in favor of eliminating the Hanson Way special setbacks. It seems clear that.
We're on questions now.
I'm sorry. So I have a question about when you have a building that includes residential but also includes other uses in the El Camino focus area, what is, what are the limits applied to the non-residential use? I'm concerned about whether we're inhibiting height in a hotel that will have residential as part of it, as part of the parcel. Can you address that, please?
Yeah, I'll start and then ask Ms. Eisberg to join in. I will say that as we were preparing the report, we, you know, this project, a couple years ago, when we started the housing focus area, was really intended to promote housing, and so a lot of those incentives that we see are geared toward that. But we realized in preparing this report that there was an open question that was left out on. on to what extent some of the commercial components take advantage of these increased floor areas or heights in particular. And as we were developing that further, and not reflected, I guess, in the staff report so much, but in recognition of some of the correspondence that came in later with respect to hotel uses, which this council has in the past promoted and supported greater FARs, we recognize that there might be a way to distinguish between a commercial office per se as one set of standards and perhaps give greater incentives for height or FAR for hotels. Ms. Iceberg, if I haven't completely muddied waters there, if you can clarify what's proposed in the ordinance?
Yes, that's right, so for a mixed-use project, the total FAR, assuming the site's more than ten thousand square feet, could be four point zero FAR. The non-residential component, as the ordinance is written, is limited to whatever the base district zoning allows. So for example, the RP zone allows a point four office FAR, and the CS or CN zones allow a hotel FAR dependent on a couple of different factors, but somewhere point four, point six in a mixed-use project, so that's how it's written now. The height limit of eighty-five feet does not extend to the non-residential component, so a standalone office or hotel building, as written, is limited to fifty feet.
My understanding is that the last time this applicant was before us, we encouraged them to retain the hotel at Creekside, is that correct?
In the last pre-screening application that was presented, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for me on technical questions, thank you.
Councilmember Rekto?
Yeah, I want to follow up on the special setbacks. So transportation hasn't weighed in, are they saying that they don't care and we can do whatever we want? Or that we shouldn't touch it and go do an assessment, come back later?
Definitely not the former. There's, it's difficult, I'll say, for staff to make informed policy decisions about a special setback when we don't have written policies in place and we're trying to think about what the future may entail. There has, you know, roadway changes that might be of interest along Hanson. Right now, it serves its purpose, but we, you know, what's the future of the research park? I think part of that is a give and take to understand what's planned. I think we heard from Stanford that they don't have any plans that would warrant that. I just feel like there's not enough for the Office of Transportation, there's just not enough in the record for us to make a definitive recommendation at this time.
So what does that mean for our action tonight?
Right, well, so this being the legislative and policy, you know, arm of the city, you know, if the council doesn't have thoughts in its own sort of capacity as to wanting to make Hanson Way, you know, two-way traffic on both sides, or, you know, you think that we can accommodate our, you know, additional bike lanes that might be a part of a future, there's already a bike lane on Hanson, might it change, how might it change? We just don't have that clarity, I guess, on how this special setback is intended to be used other than ways that we think about it in terms of, you know, bus access or bike lanes and improvements to those. I think fifty, and I think the Office of Transportation would concur, fifty is likely more than we need.
Yeah, and so are we supposed to recommend a number tonight? Or just recommend that give staff direction to further refine this and reduce that number?
So I guess no action could be taken tonight on the special setbacks, so that might give you a little bit of, you know, comfort. But you would want to give us direction if you thought that, if you were interested in seeing redevelopment at the corner of Hanson and El Camino Real, as opposed, not just redevelopment potentially, but also potentially more housing units as a part of a development there, then you would want to give us direction to reduce the special setback to twenty feet, and you could leave open, you know, to staff to go study that further, to refine that. You don't have to have some development at that corner, but I think planners and the transportation folks, and I think even representatives of Stanford would agree that reinforcing that edge at that intersection would be beneficial. And if we don't have plan.
Reinforcing the edge?
The edge at Hanson and El Camino with some kind of, you know, building or, you know, which you could only really get if you reduce the special setback.
Yeah, when I look at what I would want there, certainly some type of pedestrian referee jilin seems reasonable if there's going to be more traffic there, and maybe a left-turn lane. And so if you add all these things up together, it adds up to a reasonable-sized number, but it's not going to be fifty, right? So I think fifty is excessive, but I would really want transportation to chime in and say, no, Keith, you're forgetting about this, and so, so what is our option for direction tonight?
Well, so you could ask us.
Is this open in discussion, or do you want an action?
Well, with respect to the special setback on Hanson, we would like, as a part of a council motion tonight, we would welcome feedback to study a reduction to that special setback up to at or around twenty feet, if you thought that was appropriate, and we would go back and we'd try to study that further, and we'd think through, you know, we'd look at the right of way and we'd think about, okay, if we wanted to expand the bike lane here, if we wanted that right-turn lane, dedicated right-turn lane, or other improvements that I'm not aware of at the moment that the Office of Transportation staff would want to engage in, we can come back and that can inform a recommendation. It may not give perfect resolution to at least the development interest at thirty-three hundred, I think it is, El Camino, but at least it gets us started, and I think we can move that along pretty quickly. Okay, but it requires some kind of, it requires an amendment to the, or zoning now.
And so I would think, I feel very comfortable bringing it down to thirty, and then say maybe we can shrink it down later, but I'm not sure if that means that, does that do them any good if we bring it down to intermediate number, or?
So the individuals representing, the long-term leaseholders of that property have indicated that thirty would not be sufficient to result in a structure at that location.
Part of that is that easement, the utilities easement, I just may say that cuts across diagonally, about a third of the way down the property to the south.
We're not quite on motions yet, so.
Okay.
Are you knowing questions?
Yeah, I'm done with questions.
Okay, can we go to public comment, please?
We have six requests to speaker, first speaker is Mark J.
Good evening, Mayor Lowing, members of the City Council and city staff. I'm Mark Johnson, I'm with Acclaim, I represent three-one-five-oh El Camino Real. Let me just start by saying we support the proposed amendments, especially as they relate to the exemption of below-market fees related to development impact fees. That's critical for us, and we appreciate you expediting that for this evening. I'd also like to take a moment to just publicly thank our planner, Garrett Sauls. He's been wonderful to work with, diligent, responsive, and just, this is, his ability to help us navigate through this process has been appreciated. And I want to thank the City Council and staff, right, for your leadership in crafting a zoning mechanism that aligns with Palo Alto's values while delivering urgently needed housing. The updates under consideration strike an important balance, offering developers the clarity, flexibility required to build feasible projects while remaining consistent with the city's high design and planning standards. Again, I want to emphasize that we especially want to highlight the importance of this provision that it relates to below-market rate units being exempt from development impact fees. Without this exemption, our project would not be financially feasible. We sincerely thank the council and staff for moving this along quickly, and we hope that you can actually decide on this component at least tonight, because we're hopeful that we can start this project before year end. The project includes seventy-four inclusionary affordable units, one of the largest BMR contributions in Palo Alto's history. These units will be fully integrated into a high-quality amenity-rich residential environment. We believe this represents a meaningful advancement in inclusionary housing, providing lower-income residents, including many essential workers, with access to the same top-tier amenities and services as market-rate tenants. When people who serve our community can afford to live within it, we strengthen our neighborhoods and reduce the strain on regional transportation and infrastructure systems. Again, we respectfully encourage the council to consider broadening this BMR fee exemption policy to ensure that other multifamily housing projects can similarly contribute to this inclusion, this inclusive living in Palo Alto, thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas A.
Hi, everybody, my name is Thomas Agamani, and I am here on behalf of my family. We are a four-generation Palo Alto family and the landowners of two-nine-five-one El Camino, the north V cap site that you guys mentioned, and four-seventy Olive. And we are asking the City Council to extend the housing focus area to include two-nine-five-one El Camino Real and the adjacent parcels in the housing focus area expansion as recommended by the Department of Planning and Transportation. And I am thirty-two years old, and I grew up in this community, and I'd just like to add that I have quite a few friends that work here, but I don't have any friends that live here. And so we definitely need more housing to allow people who grew up in this community and who work in this community and provide for this community a place to live in this community. So with that, we are requesting that the City of Palo Alto expand the housing focus area to the east side of El Camino, to our site, to promote the high-density multifamily development that is much needed. And implementing this housing focus area supports the City of Palo Alto's housing element objectives, including high-density multifamily housing located along transit corridors within one-half mile of Caltrans and on underutilized sites. And this will support the housing element objectives to create over six thousand new housing units by two thousand thirty-one. So thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Ted O.
Greetings, City Council members. Thanks so much, my name is Ted O'Hamlin, I'm a consulting project executive for the Creekside End. As mentioned earlier, in two thousand twenty-two, we had a pre-screening here that was a all-residential project, and since that time, we submitted to the city a new project design that included residential and the continuation of the hotel use. The project has not been before you, but I can say that that wasn't the only thing we responded to. We responded to some ingress and egress issues that were pointed out with Matadero Avenue. We retained two of the food venues that would continue to live on the site, or at least in a new permutation in the new development. And we also, by having the multiple uses or the mixed use, broke up some of the building massing along El Camino Real. So what we are here to say is we very much want to work within the confines of the El Camino focus area plan, but it has to work, and there are a couple of elements in the draft ordinance that don't work for us because it knocks the project out of its feasibility. The first of which is a daylight plane, and as Mayor Lowing mentioned in your questions, we had to put on our thinking caps to find ways that we could get a supported sixty-degree daylight plane, but we don't need the whole run of the project's property line to be a sixty-degree daylight plane. We only need it for one side of the creek. As I said, the project is not before you, so I won't really get into the full details of it, but by losing that sixty-degree daylight plane in particular, we would lose sixteen units and some three bedrooms. With these projects, and as Mark Johnson said, when you lose things like that or you're able to get impact fees waived for the DMR units, these are the kind of things that make a project work and don't, so it is a very fine nuance that happens. So that daylight plane is important to us. Much more important because the proposal that we submitted to the city was based on the core of the original El Camino area focus plan with height and FAR. We designed a two-third-plus residential project and a one-third hotel project, which is actually a little bit less, but we did that following some guidelines from the Housing Accountability Act, and that's where we arrived with what we put to the city today. So by reducing the hotel to what the existing zoning would allow, which is, by the way, hotel, we would be losing about forty percent of the proposed hotel. And the residential and the hotel will succeed together, or they will die together. We can't do one project without the other. So it's important that we might be able to get some latitude on hospitality use versus maybe an office use or a retail use. Again, like the daylight plane, we're putting ideas together that maybe the council would consider to help our project comply with the future or the evolving El Camino focus area plan. Another matter, upper story setbacks, I think that this has been reviewed a couple of times. There's some people that say that on El Camino Real is a wide enough street that an eighty-five-foot height being less than a hundred-foot wide El Camino is manageable. And then the other thing is the open space standard.
Okay, thank you. We also had your letter.
Yeah. Our next speaker is Winter D.
Hi, you all, I'm not sure that this is really a concern tonight, but a couple of months ago, there was some talk about extending the focus area south of Matadero. And so I want to speak to that and a couple of other things tonight. I want, certainly if anybody goes toward extending the focus area south of Matadero, you really need to be very cautious and know that Barron Park and Ventura's walkable neighborhood is composed of many and varied small businesses, mainly concentrated on four blocks between Matadero and Los Robles. If the focus area is extended through there, it would very much endanger a very valuable attribute of both Ventura and Barron Park neighborhoods. Neighbors support these businesses, and they support, and those businesses support our neighborhoods, and they have for a long time. Some businesses there may not look as manicured and she-she as those on University Avenue, and yet they are successful, we have the lowest commercial vacancy rate in Palo Alto. The lion's share of the businesses are on small lots, neither tier one or tier two, and not conducive to large developments that can accommodate lower-income residents. So as you discuss this expansion of the focus area, which I think is more up toward Cal Avenue and Cambridge for the most part, I ask you, though, to support the survival of our valuable walkable neighborhoods by excluding Matadero to Los Robles avenues, four blocks from expansion of the focus area. Also, I ask that you designate an additional node across from the triangle node to include Tesla, McLaren's, and Walgreens Drugstore, which shares the block with them, and so that would comprise the block between Arastodaro and Maybell, and that should definitely be a cohesive node. And finally, it may be a bridge too far, probably is, but if HCD and state law allows, I ask that you increase from fifteen hundred to something around twenty-five hundred square feet when replacing ground floor retail. Fifteen hundred square feet is extremely limiting, smaller than most of our current small businesses. Our walkable neighborhood has served us well and deserves to survive as much as retail on University or Cal Avenue. Thank you very much for your thinking about all of that.
Our next speaker is Amy A.
Good evening, Amy Ashton, Palo Alto Forward. We submitted a letter in strong support of the focus area zoning changes. We especially support extending them even beyond the twenty or so parcels being considered. being considered tonight because of the opportunity they represent to bring a large number of new, modern housing units online quickly. But we all know housing projects in general are on a knife's edge in terms of feasibility. If they cannot be financed, they will not be built. The success of daylight planes beyond the staff and ARB-recommended 45 degrees are a barrier to housing. Prescriptive upper-floor setbacks, when we already have pages of design, objective design standards, they're a barrier to housing. Lack of flexibility in open space and retail requirements, these are barriers to housing. Our housing shortage is fueling our climate emergency, and it's really fueling human misery among our local workers. Be bold with your actions tonight so we can see real progress on housing unit approvals, and we can create a better El Camino Real. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Laura B.
Hello, my name is Laura Bowser, and I'm with Sand Hill Property Company. We ground leased several properties within Stanford Research Park, including 3300 El Camino, which is part of the El Camino Focus Area. We are currently working to develop a mixed-use project at 3300 El Camino using the focus area. I'd like to thank staff and council for your efforts to update this focus area and increase the feasibility of developing housing within the city. We support the proposed revisions to the focus area and agree they will help deliver housing. However, we have a few additional updates that we would like to suggest moving forward. The first, as you've discussed, is removing the Hanson Way setback. The existing setback is no longer necessary as Hanson Way already provides a Class 2B buffered bike lane, which is the recommended bike facility in the city's pending bike ped transportation update. If the setback is more than 20 feet moving forward, there is no room between the setback and the easement to build housing or retail, which would limit the use and activation of that corner. The second update we request is to clarify that the rear and interior setbacks only apply to above-grade structures so that parking can be maximized below grade. This is just to be able to provide more housing on-site. The more parking we can provide, the more housing we can provide. I'd also like to address just some of the questions around height. The 85 feet in height for residential is really necessary to provide any substantial amount of residential on a project. Inner reduction will reduce the amount of housing that can be provided. And also, for 3300 El Camino, there's an existing office entitlement. We would like to have at least 50 feet in height for office moving forward to make sure that there's enough developmental space on the site to make room for housing. Finally, we just would like the commission or the council to revisit the 20% BMR onsite requirement. Requirement was previously adopted to meet builders' remedy requirements or match builders' remedy requirements. But as staff mentioned, it's now only 13% of units required for builders' remedy projects. A 20% BMR requirement has been repeatedly shown infusible by many cities, and we aren't aware of any economic analysis done by Palo Alto that shows 20% BMR is feasible. So we just ask that, like the remainder of the city, the focus area be able to pay an in lieu fee for affordable housing. And we're just holding the same standard as everyone else. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Manuel S.
Hi, good evening, members of the Palo Alto City Council. My name is Manasara Saad, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of SV Home. First, we want to thank the city and staff for their work on this ordinance and their efforts in advancing thorough zoning changes among El Camino Real. These updates show real progress in meeting Palo Alto's housing element commitments and delivering on promises made to both the community and the state. The proposed ordinance directly advances Program 3.4E of the housing element, which calls for expanding the El Camino Real focus area to support housing through increased height, floor ratio, objective standards. According to the staff report, these changes could enable up to 500 new homes, helping the city meet its green obligations and add much-needed housing in a region that desperately needs it. This update is also important because it represents real progress towards a more sustainable and inclusive future for Palo Alto. By enabling new homes near jobs, services, shopping, and transit, this plan supports not just housing production, but community well-being. New residents will become customers and workers at local businesses. They'll become students within the schools facing enrollment declines, and neighbors with shorter commutes, the last of which would simultaneously serve to help reduce the region's climate emissions. The social and environmental benefits of building more homes in resource-rich areas like El Camino Real are far-reaching and long overdue. We also want to commend the city for its thoughtful and coordinated approach to its policy. This proposal aligns closely with the recently implemented housing incentive program and demonstrates a clear understanding of how to navigate compliance with state density bonus law. We appreciate, pardon me, we especially appreciate the incentives for law consolidation and the impact fee waivers for affordable units. These can be meaningful tools that will help make housing more financially feasible in Palo Alto, which is a city where costs are especially high and opportunities limited. That's why it's absolutely essential that the city adopts staff's recommendations. Palo Alto can best meet its residents' housing needs by making it easier to build. Several of the sites within the expanded focus area have already drawn developer interest. With clear standards and timely approvals, the city can help guide these proposals towards outcomes that support both community goals and affordable housing production. Thank you for your time.
That concludes public comment on Action Item 7.
Great, thank you very much. Back to the dais for comments. Consular with Kat Haynes.
I do have another technical question, I'm sorry. If I could ask the staff, there was a developer, who I think became an applicant, who said, hey, we got a lot of property just south of Matadero. We'd like to be included in the focus area. And I think we made some progress toward including them, but I'm not seeing those properties with lines drawn around them on these maps unless I'm reading the maps wrong.
Yeah, I believe they actually are included. Ms. Iceberg, that's correct, yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'll just continue on with my comments. I think there's, it sounds like there's agreement or maybe consensus on the Hanson Way special setbacks. I'm certainly one in favor of housing being able to be built on that portion of the property. And I think they clearly don't need the setbacks for their intended purpose. And so I would be in favor of removing it entirely. I've been persuaded by the arguments about the stepbacks on the El Camino frontage as valuable to some extent and in some respects and in some places. But it may be harkening back to an older form of design and architecture to require stepbacks everywhere along El Camino. And I would rather see us let that be a case-by-case, figure it out with the applicant rather than required the 10-foot requirement every time because I am worried about what that 10-foot stepback above 55 feet does to the number of housing units we can have up there. I would like to see us add those NVCAP parcels to the El Camino focus area, both or all three of the El Camino ones and the Olive. And I know that colleague raised the issue of the open space credit being sought by an applicant that wrote us a letter. I think this is a really critical issue to examine for the property that includes the creek. Does the creek count? Should the creek count? It could be an incredibly gorgeous property with that creek naturalized, and it seems to me that it should count for the open space credit. I'm not sure that question is before us right now, but just thought I would go on the record saying that. That's it for me. Thank you.
I'll make a couple comments, watching for the lights to come on. I thought the, I think the hotel is a different animal than an office or other kinds of commercial. And there's a lot of benefits to that for the city to, you know, house its relatives of people that are already living here. And there's obviously a TOT that we'd like to have. So I'd like to see that sort of carved out of the commercial or specified as an allowable use there. On the issue of the setback, I think I'm comfortable with where I thought Consular Rektal was going of, you know, give direction to reduce it to 25 feet at this point, given that there's going to be some setback needed from the road. And when we get to the motions, I don't know if you want that contingent on approval of the Transportation Department in 90 days or something like that. But if you really think that's necessary, we can probably do it. But I'd be okay going with that right now. Just a little bit unclear, this may be a two-word answer, but you discussed the whole thing about the 2951, 2905, and 2991 in about three paragraphs. And it's still not quite clear, what do we have to do to say, just go on that? Do we just say go, and then you incorporate it because there's references to CEQA and that type of thing?
Yes, if the council were interested in including the properties that were flagged as Tier Two and mentioned in the staff report, you could tell us to incorporate that as a part of your motion. And then when it comes back on a second reading, that could be incorporated. I do think that there is some guidance needed with respect to, so that would cover the properties that are fronting on El Camino. But as you heard from the speaker today and in correspondence, that they also own the R1 property that has that vacant commercial shell. If you wanted that to be incorporated into that area, that would be, we would need direction on that. I think that R1 property, at least in previous iterations, did serve as some kind of a transitional buffer to what would be the next adjacent R1 property. So some guidance from the council on how to incorporate that lot. And I guess if Attorney Yang is on the call, I might ask a question relative to whether rezoning is necessary for R1 or if we could just subsume the development under the housing focus area because we would have a similar scenario potentially on the Creekside site with respect to hotel use exceeding floor area for the R zoning on that site.
Yeah, so as written, the focus area would not, does not apply. We don't, we haven't specified how it would apply to the R1, but it could be modified to that. I guess on the earlier question about direction on the Tier Two, I just want to double-check with Ms. Iceberg on whether there would be additional CEQA clearance that's necessary before we effectuate that.
That was part of my question, so thank you.
Right, so given, these are not very large sites, so we could include these as part of the build-out and part of the assumption about what's already been evaluated under the housing element. So adding the three sites fronting El Camino in that, in those, in the NVCAP would work. And we would just change the map, so when it came back, you would see the ordinance with a revised map.
Okay, good. And then on the daylight plane, just for clarity, page 89, you said that PTC disagreed whether it should be lowered from 60 to 45 or 30. The vote was 3-3, so 3 said 45 and 3 said 30?
That's correct. The existing daylight plane is not 60 degrees necessarily. It differs depending on what district you're in. But the proposal was just to standardize the daylight plane when adjacent to the R1 or the R2 to 45 degrees. That was the staff recommendation, the PTC. The PTC split motion was, as you said, half 45 degrees, the other half the steeper 30 degrees.
Yeah, okay, just want to clarify that. And one of the applicants from the Creekside applicant said, let's see, what was the exact language in his letter? 60 is a commonly-used standard. So I guess we'd be moving away from that commonly-used standard. Okay, that's all I have for now. Consular, Bert?
Thank you. So just following up on the mayor's discussion on the hotel, I actually think that if we want to have any incentive for hotels going forward in these areas, they've got to be able to have the same height as what we are allowing for housing. And as the mayor said, from a fiscal standpoint for the city, the hotels are tremendously valuable. When we upzoned hotels to 2.0 FAR now 17 years ago, that's what began what are now 10 new hotels. We're not going to get any more unless we update the hotel FAR and height commensurate with what we're doing with housing. So I would support that. The, on the parcel on Olive, if we gave direction to staff to develop zoning that would allow that parcel to be a transition between the housing incentive zone and the R1, it would still have to abide by the 45-degree from that, whatever, three stories or whatever it is on that parcel down to the R1. Is that correct?
That's right. So that parcel on Olive is adjacent to another R1 parcel and would have a side yard daylight plane requirement.
Yeah, so it would just be a gradual transition from El Camino high height to that being medium height to the R1. I don't know what would be the best way for us to give that direction because, as Director Late said, I'm not sure that you know what zoning to do. But I think we, I'm hearing some support to giving direction to go ahead and do that. And then I support on Hanson, just going forward with that setback, 20 feet is about from here to the wall. And that's the additional setback beyond what's already there on Hanson. I will note that we already have a bike lane and about a foot and a half buffer between the bike lane and the travel lane. So it's not restrictive from a bike lane standpoint right now. So adding another 20 feet, I'm pretty comfortable with that. And then lastly, on the top-floor stepbacks, I actually think that is a really important part of urban design. When we looked at the Acclaim project, that was a big selling point for us to go up there. The whole set of kind of urban design principles of the ratio of height to width and the ability for it to not feel like a giant tunnel is really improved by having that top-floor setback. They still get the bulk of that benefit. We are doing very extensive upzoning. I mean, we're talking about 4.0 FAR here, which is double what we had had in our highest zoning historically. So looking for this to have one aspect that helps achieve a better urban design. And by urban design, it's really feeling a human scale, the feel of a human scale. And that's one of the things that differentiates our community from many communities that have abandoned those principles. And those are the best, you know, from new urbanism principles and best design principles. That's what really makes a community matter is that the various aspects that achieve a human-scale, walkable environment. So I just want to encourage us to stick with that. I think we're giving great bonuses. And I think we can retain certain values there.
Consular Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question, just to clarify. So the current housing element deadline for what, Program 3.4, is next month, in June? And so if we incorporate 20 And so if we incorporate 2951, 2905 and 2999 um, on El Camino, no way we're making that deadline?
Well, we're, we're, we're achieving the deadline on um, the other aspects. I mean, we didn't specify how many, you know, we, we talked about 500 units or so being expanded, right? The omission of that, those tier two properties, the Argomonte, you know, site would not impede us from achieving um, the timeline if council took action on this tonight.
Okay, I interpreted it as that meant we would not be able to, that it would just delay the process by about 10 months, I thought the staff report said, but we can separate that.
If, if you wanted to extend to the other tier two properties?
Yes.
Yes, then you're right. I'm sorry, I was, I thought we were just focusing in on across the street. Um, but, so we could
Oh, you say we can incorporate those three properties, which are two, tier two, and do that within the deadline?
Uh, possibly within the deadline and irrespective of the deadline, we're still achieving the um, outcome of this program because of the proposal that's before you with the tier one.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm interested in expanding tier two. I'm interested in looking at those three additional properties as, as well, but there do seem, there seems to be some potential and significant impacts on some of the R1 zones there. So I would, I'd be fine. Can I guess directing the staff to do 2951, but those three properties along with the other tier two at um, within a future area plan. I don't think that needs to be done right now. And imagine, I know you got your plate full. Uh, just as far as things we've been talking about real quick, um, I don't know if we've talked about the below grade setbacks. I, seems like those should be removed if within the property, those are getting in the way of underground parking. Those are things that we, we want to encourage and if that's kind of getting in the way of that, especially with some of these consolidated lots, that makes sense to me. I agree with, with the mayor as far as hotels and treating those differently than office and non-housing uses and allowing those to be as tall as, as housing. Fine with the Hanson way setback, the council member Rektal addressed and I, and I, I support the ARB and the staff recommendation of the 45 degree daylight plane. Um, if we're going to be able to get the density that we, that we needed want along El Camino, 30 degrees seems a bit too restrictive. You know, I think it's unfortunate that it's, it's unfortunate that we're having to respond to these builder, to the to new state law around builder remedy that's lowering our affordability requirements when we're showing as a city that actually what we're doing on El Camino is working with us being able to hit that 20% BMR rate. And I wish the, I wish the state would look at that instead of kind of further removing that, but I think the, the staff response to further incentivize developers who have existing builder remedy projects on um, kind of submitted. That, yeah, it's unfortunate we have to do that, but I think this is, um, I think this is a good way to be able to try to um, get those developers to, to use the, the city's rules. And sorry, just looking through my notes, see if I covered everything. Agreed to keeping upper story setbacks. I do think that's important with massing and scale. Yeah, that's all I got.
Okay, so um, let me ask you the director of process question. You referenced before that some things could come back on the second reading. So perhaps something like the um, open space credit, since we don't know quite what we're talking about there. Is that the kind of thing that could come back after you study it in the next week or two and give us a perspective on that to be added in the second reading?
I, I think we would need councils um, direction on what you, you would like us to do with that. I, I do think it probably only applies to that one property with the creek running through it.
Okay.
And so you may want to focus it to that property, just given that.
I mean, generally, we don't want to do that, right? We want to talk about this overall plan we've got.
True, I, um, we do want to have some uh, consistency across the board and not create different zoning, you know, for each of these, um, these parcels. I, that one site is different uh, in terms of its proximity to R1 zoning. And also because it has the creek, a natural, you know, naturalized creek running through it. So I, I don't think it would be imprudent to, you know, uh, think of that contextually in a different way from the other properties. But if, that's if the council were supportive of the notion of uh, giving some kind of credit. Uh, and I, and I don't think it's necessarily for the reasons laid out by the um, applicant. Um, but maybe perhaps some recognition of um, either a constraint associated with the property or the natural sort of um, amenity uh, associated with the creek on the site. Anyways, we could come back with something and that could come back on the second reading, but I would um, it would be better if the council could say, yes, we would like to do that as opposed to staff go study it and come back with a recommendation, because then there won't be a chance for a dialogue on it. So the clearer you can be in your direction, the easier it is for us to come back on the second reading.
Okay, so the starting point of that question was obviously that this is a whole new concept that we don't know about and you haven't studied and it, I don't think. And so it, it came as a request from a developer.
Right.
Then it got complicated by the fact that it's not going to be applicable to necessarily everybody in the focus area, because it don't have that contextual issue. So it's probably a pretty good example of, you know, do we just skip the whole thing and get it next time? Or do you find a way to work that into, you know, discussions with that particular applicant or how's the best way to do that?
Uh, again, I would, I would
I, I'd like to just step in here uh, to clarify.
Okay.
Uh, items that come back on second reading uh, are typically, if they're changes to the proposed ordinance, they would be items where the council has provided clear enough direction that there aren't unanswered questions for staff to address. Um, but if there is something where staff needs to exercise, you know, independent judgment, uh, that would generally require a new first reading, uh, so that there could be that dialogue on the staff proposal.
And that would start to impact your deadlines.
Potentially. I mean, I, I, I think that uh, it, it depends, uh, and, and um, Mr. Yang can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, if there is consensus, even if there's not perfect uh, resolution as to how a particular item may get resolved, it could return potentially back on the council's consent calendar as a first reading. Um, but if it's, if it's a whole new body of analysis and work, then we would not, that would not qualify. Uh, the, I, before we get to the process question, I guess I would ask the council, is this something that you're interested in pursuing?
And if it's not, I'm just using it as one example. I mean, I've heard about 10 that some people might want to add it to the motion or some people might say, that's kind of interesting, but we don't know enough about it. So that's why I just raise this example first.
Yeah, so we, we would, if that, if there's a motion and that makes it into it and there's ambiguity, we can have a conversation about that.
Well, we can do it that way. It's just to make a motion, make the amendments we think have to be made now and then see if there's any, any kind of leftovers. Okay, Councilmember Bert?
Yeah, I'd like to um, go forward with a motion and then we can uh, I'll put in some amendments and be open to hearing from others. So um, first would be the um, uh, recommend to approve the staff recommendations to adopt an ordinance amending chapters 18.14 and 16.58 of the municipal code per attachment A. And then within that, um, additional amendments would be, uh, and I correct me, Director Late, if I get any of this, um, that's unnecessary, but it would be the 45 degree daylight plane to include that.
That's already in there, isn't it?
Yeah, that's part of what I'm asking for him to clarify.
Yeah, I believe that is consistent with the existing standard. Uh, Ms. Iceberg, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
So that's not necessary to be included in the motion. Thank you. Um, a 20 foot uh, a modification to the Hanson setback to 20 feet. In inclusion of um, the tier two properties at 2905, 2951 and 2999 El Camino. And let me know clerk if I'm going too fast. Okay, and then um, uh, related to those properties, um, direction to staff to um, at a later date, come back with a, a proposal for rezoning uh, the property behind 2999 uh, uh, from R1 to an appropriate transitional zoning for housing. The below grade setbacks, are those not currently in the proposed ordinance? Or the encroachments, I should say?
Uh, so the the below grade encroachments get a little complicated for one of the properties, um, but could have transferability across all of them. Um, I so I, I think it would be important to communicate the council's interest in allowing for that encroachment. If you were interested in doing that, I just, I will note that there are some reasons why we don't want to necessarily encroach into uh, setbacks and that's for groundwater recharge or meeting our
So if we gave a, a direction to uh, return with um, below grade encroachments to the extent that uh, utility or environmental factors do not conflict with them?
Yeah, we would, we would ensure that happens anyways. Um, so we would be covered there. I, the, the, I think that the, why this becomes complicated for the one property is because um, there's going to be a um, a mid lot um, parcel line that gets created, which we wouldn't necessarily have. It's like, i-if the site were developed in its entirety.
So tell me what language we could provide that would give that direction that we want to embrace them, but allow for uh, circumstances where they don't apply.
Uh, right, so I'm just thinking off the top of my head and I'll ask the city staff team to weigh in if they have another perspective. I, I might make it specific to RP zone properties within the focus area that are subdivided by parcel map, shall not be subject to um, the below grade um, uh, setback requirements.
Okay, so the, then the point there would be that um, to allow below grade encroachments except as Director Late just stated, and I think he can give you the, his longer language after the motion's up. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. And then just to the staff, if there was uh, Mr. Yang or Ms. Iceberg, if there's any questions about that.
If I may, Jennifer Armour, uh, Assistant Director. Um, I wanted to clarify for property within the RP zone. Um, do we want to be allowing below grade uh, parking garages to encroach into the required setback? Because I believe that's what was being requested and so
I thought Director Late was saying that was the exception, those would be excluded from the encroachment. Is that correct?
So the, the ask, uh, so thank you, um, Ms. Armour, so what was just spoken was, I believe, correct with respect to the applicant's request. They do want to be, have the ability to encroach into the uh, the setback with the below grade parking. And I believe that was shared by your colleagues. Um, I think when you restated it, it came out the inverse of that. So
On that property, okay. So can I ask you on that particular amendment to provide the clerk with your suggested language and will, in all likelihood endorse that? And then the last would be that the uh, height for uh, the El Camino focus area would be 80 feet for uh, development uh, of housing only or 85 feet for uh, housing with ground floor retail or hotel development. And those were the only ones I had. So see if we have a second.
Second.
And I don't need to speak anymore to
Councilmember Rektal?
I had a question about the below grade. Is this?
Uh, can I ask you to speak to your second?
Oh, okay. Uh, nothing to add.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay, below grade, is this two properties, the setback between the properties, or is this between on the edge, like are we sticking onto the road? Are we sticking?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't understand the question.
So the below grade parking, where we want to go into the setback. Which setback is that? Is that the setback from one parcel to the next, or is that the setback from the parcel to the roadway?
Uh, so it would be within a parcel to the uh, property lines or, or property boundaries.
Okay, so if we have a special setback and we have a right turn lane now, that we could have traffic on top of that.
So uh, I, I believe we would carve out the special setback as not an area for uh, below grade parking. Um, based on PTC's prior comments and, and other discussion about that. Um, that would affect a small portion of the one property that is uh, seeking that adjustment. And I don't believe it is impactful to the overall project design. Again, what makes that, not to get to the specifics of that project, but it's one large parcel. And um, well, it's one large leasehold, but that's going to be uh, subdivided into a uh, new parcels that are created to keep the residential and the commercial entities separate. And that creation of a property line between those two uses creates a, a setback boundary.
Kind of artificial setback.
Exactly. And so that's what we're trying to mitigate.
That totally makes sense. I just don't want us to constrain ourselves from transportation. That's why we have the setback. If you can't use the setback for transportation, then let them build on it.
Right, so I, I would, I, um, so thanks for asking that question and, and I would interpret that as um, uh, not allowing for that. And just like, as we talked about for uh, the pre-screenings on San Antonio, we're really trying to keep those special setbacks that we retain free and clear of encroachments.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
I have a question, Director Late, on the last point. Is that actually workable? Because at 80 feet for some development, is that going to discourage development? And the proverbial phrase, it doesn't pencil. Um, it is, this is slightly different than across the street, as I recall. I, I get where the maker is going and I, and I like the incentives, so.
If I may say, across the street is 79 feet, the claim. Is that what you're talking about?
I thought across the street, we allowed 85 with setbacks.
Oh, it's, it's 79 you said earlier.
Uh, uh, when we say across the street, which street?
Are you talking about the
On the west side of El Camino.
With, are you talking about the Fish Market McDonald's property?
I'm just talking about the zoning for the housing focus area.
So the current housing focus area allows up to 85 feet in height.
Right, that's exactly what I'm saying. So I, I interpret this as to say that the other side of the street is only going to have 80 and, and or 85 with those other items.
If I may clarify, when, my question earlier was, why do we need 85? If the Acclaim does seven stories with 79 and the answer was, well, you need 85 if you're going to have ground floor retail. Well, you need eighty five if you're going to have ground floor retail. And that's why I built it in eighty five if you're having ground floor retail. But not that extra five feet if you aren't having it. And the the point is that we want to incentivize ground floor retail. If we get in the eighty five either way. We won't get the ground floor retail where they don't. They're not required to.
I get the point. I was just asking the director to confirm that that's workable.
Yeah, so. I believe it is, and I would ask Miss Iceberg to to weigh in on on that feasibility. I I believe the reason we have eighty five feet is for the reasons that were stated earlier, which is to allow for retail use on the. On the ground floor, which typically has taller ceilings. But. It gets. One complication I could envision is, you know, retail is not going to cover the full floor plate probably on that first floor. So does the provision for the eighty five feet extend if there's any retail or is it just over the portion where it is?
The intent is that. If it met our. Minimum with the retail requirements that we have there, have didn't we set a certain amount or have we? Would we need a ratio of that ground floor?
I don't believe we have a minimum set amount for retail.
Okay, I don't think we can set that on the fly. The concept would be that I'd be fine with them having that height. For the whole building, provided they had whatever we establish. As the appropriate amount of ground floor retail. Can we have that? Return to us on on what that. Percentage would be on a second reading or or not?
I think that would be difficult to establish. A lot of retail, I I know there's different perspectives on this, but I I know that for a housing development, the retail component is. Not a revenue generating aspect, so I I wouldn't want to establish. And I don't know that between now and the second reading, I could establish what would be an appropriate threshold.
How can we move the ball forward tonight if we want to retain an incentive for retail and not give them eighty five feet if there's no retail?
So I guess. I'm struck by. How much we're really going to recognize five feet that setback with the upper level setbacks between eighty and eighty five feet. So I don't know. Coming up with a. There may be other ways to incentivize retail.
I hadn't envisioned there. There is a a conflict in that if we're having that top floor. Step back. And you couldn't have that and. The extra five feet for ground floor retail. With this height limit. All right, we may be stuck there on not being able to incentivize the retail. If that's the case, I will. Withdraw number four. Second, who's good with that, too?
Yeah, unless we want to, if we really are wanting to have retail and we're happy with eighty five. Housing, we could say another three feet if you have retail. If we think that retail is going to be that tight with a first floor.
We have certain locations that we still are requiring retailers. Was clarified earlier. So maybe that covers it well enough.
And age, okay.
Okay, you're still you're still on board with the second, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Still on board.
So. How about this approach, Director, on the need to have some contextual discretion? Where we just hand that to the planning director to do open space. Credit to be defined. In cases where, you know. Where what? Where the natural environment can be enhanced or something like that?
I well, I guess I want to answer that question with a question. And first get a pulse from the council if this is something that you want to.
Yes, sure.
Allow rather than try to figure something that might not be supported.
Well, my original question ten minutes ago was, I don't really quite know what it is. In terms of how it would be calculated, what they're going to get for what, you know, so I need to know what this thing is before I'm going to be super excited about it. But I don't want you to have to. Go spend six months looking at it either. But at least one of our councilmember, Councilmember Lefkot Hames, thought that there was some merit there.
My understanding is that it's a hundred foot. Open space per unit or resident or and. Creek is the applicant is close, but the creek. Just the configuration of the property is such that you can't get any more out of it, but yet you have this not this creek that is going to be naturalized running through it. It sort of feels as a matter of common sense that we ought to be able to say that creek counts that is very specific to this property. So I don't know how you phrase such a. Context based exception, but it does feel important to consider it.
And if. At least three of your colleagues agreed with that concept, that would be sufficient direction for us to work with and return on second reading. We don't have to figure out the language here tonight. But if the sentiment is. The naturalized creek should count for up to fifty percent of the open space required for a project, we can work with with that.
So we have two.
It's reasonable to me.
Okay, there's four at this side. Take a look at that. Yeah, and you'd have to have some constraints on there, like they couldn't cover it up later and it had to be exposed, republic could see it and whatever you decide is right on that. So it's real open space, but.
Do you need that? As part of the motion or?
We we would. We would need.
Okay, all right, so. If I got it right, it would be. Up to fifty percent. Of. A naturalized creek space can be counted for open space for the project. And that would be to, do we do we need to do just set it that versus? Direct you to return?
You can you can you can say that and then we'll incorporate that language into the second reading ordinance.
Okay. Seconder?
You on?
Yes.
Okay, and and we we. Probably will tie in some of the language about restoration if the creek is going to be restored so that there's that understanding.
Exactly, that's good.
You don't need to include that in the motion.
That's very good. Other comments or amendments?
I have. I have a question, I guess, to our team and and Mr. Yang, if you're listening, item number one. Just noting for the clerk that modification is misspelled, but should that be? Direction to staff to amend the zoning map to reduce the special setback to twenty feet? And and that would not come back on second reading, by the way. That's a process that we would have to go through. Mr. Yang?
That that's right. Yeah, that would need to be direction for staff to pursue that. And yeah, it's a it's a separate modification to Title twenty one of our.
Sounds good. You catch that?
Just wanted to clarify one point on the. Open space. Is it fifty percent of the creek space can be counted as open space or that creek space can be counted as fifty percent of the open space requirement?
I think it's the latter.
Okay.
And I guess we do have, you'll have a a definitional requirement on. What are the boundaries of a creek? It's it's usually the top of embankment. Is that right? Okay, thanks.
Need some wording changes in number one. Okay. Other lights, yeah. I think I think who was first, Councilmember Stone?
Thank you. My concern about the. Below grade encroachments is that this is another thing we're trying to. Put in place because of a specific applicant. And. I know that they are concerned about the encroachment both toward Hanson. The encroachment. Into the Hanson setback and the encroachment toward their own second building. If there are multiple buildings on the. Parcel. And so the way number three is phrased, it doesn't. Address the toward Hanson piece. Is that something that we can? Fix here or is that too specific for this motion?
So, Councilmember, are you are you saying the below grade parking garage? Is problematic at the Hanson way piece? You have information about that?
I have information that they want to be able to encroach. They want to be able to come. To go into that setback. With their underground parking.
Well, so that gets into some complications with respect to what we might want to use that special setback for in the future, if anything at all. I I wonder without knowing now how impactful that would be relative to the amount of parking spaces that could be lost. And whether that would truly be problematic.
And I don't know. I'm just raising it because it was a concern raised with me, but I. I don't have any additional information to offer there that is helpful.
And if if Director, if you wanted to come back at a later time. Basically with a specific exception that would address that if you determine it was appropriate, is that easy to do?
I I don't know. I I think we have to take a look at how we'll write that language. For the second reading.
I mean, but in some ways it's just engineering, right? We have tunnels that go under roads and so if. If they want to put the parking under or they want to make it strong enough that a car can drive on top of it, then we don't care. It's just that we don't want. Their underground parking to constrain our transportation.
Well, he he said he would come back in.
Yeah.
Second reading, so, Councilmember Stone?
I had one more thing to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, my bad. I appreciate that we removed the eighty five eighty foot. Simply because I feel like we've made a commitment. It's in the newspaper that we talked about an eighty five foot height limit. On Fabian as well as San Antonio, as well as El Camino focus area. So I do think it would have confused. It might have appeared to be a retreat from that, even though I don't think it was intended that way. So I'm I'm glad to see that we have clarified that.
You're up.
Thank you. Just one question. So for tier two sites, PTC has not reviewed it?
They've looked at the tier two sites, but they looked at all the sites and they broke them up into different tiers or and the tier two ones. Would come back later under a separate initiative.
Okay, so as the motion is written now, would those? For the sorry, for for item two, inclusion of tier two properties, twenty nine oh five and those and those other two. Would that? How would that kind of move forward in the in this process as far as PTC? I mean, how much of a vetting did they? Provide, et cetera?
So you're talking about the three lots.
Yeah.
Of the tier two, so across the street. Those those could get incorporated with this action tonight. The. The commission and and I'll ask Miss Iceberg, to the extent that the PTC delved into a discussion of those properties, I think they did talk about it. There was letters and correspondence that were turned in, but there was some hesitancy because it was unknown. What would happen with that R one property? There was no project before them and they they weren't prepared to just. Support it in that more abstract sort of concept, Miss Iceberg or. Miss Armour, any further updates to that?
Sure. So as we were working on this project with the PTC, the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan was moving forward at the same time in those rezonings. The PTC actually supported, including the entire tier two within the focus area. The housing element program was much more limited and the sequel analysis done as part of that program was more limited. So once we started doing that sequel analysis, we could not accommodate the entirety of all the tier one and the tier two sites within that bucket. So. The PTC looked at tier two. I don't recall that they discussed these three particular sites. In any specificity, but they did recommend inclusion of tier two overall. When they saw the actual ordinance, they only looked at the tier one properties that you're looking at tonight.
Okay, thank you.
In a minute.
Okay, if there are no more questions or comments, except from the director.
Sorry, just on the to the clerk on two A. I believe you can strike. Below grade setbacks on that part. And to the council. And to Mr. Yang and and staff. Is it the council's intent then to allow hotels to? As a part of the as a part of the housing focus area, some of that that site in particular is located on residential zoning. Which may not. By itself allow for hotel uses. So. Are we saying that within the project boundary on the housing focus area site? Which is in your packet, the boundary. We would allow hotel on that whole site. To have a FAR of up to. I think we said two point O. And a height of up to eighty five feet.
No, it was. So the intention and I I realize now that when we got rid of the the ground floor, we lost the hotel language. Ground floor retail. My intention was it would be the same FAR as the residential, so same height, same FAR. Four point O and eighty five feet. For hotels now.
Except if it bordered R one there, they would have some setbacks.
Oh, yeah. It would. Well, wouldn't it have the same requirements as the residential does, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It doesn't get any special treatment, but it doesn't have to be, but it can be carved out of the no commercial.
So so the intent is to allow existing hotel to stay and to allow for provisions up to eighty five feet in height.
We're not just existing, this is.
And proposed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and and so just given that underlying zoning, I just want to make sure, Mr. Yang, I guess, specifically to you. Is does there need to be any adjustment made to the motion to reflect that?
Yes, right now the motion doesn't speak to. You know, additional allowances for hotel and so.
Oh, it did and then it just vanished.
Right. So that that does need to be specified. And then staff will need to. Look into how to address this for the, you know, if there's a. RM zoned. Property that has nonconforming hotel currently. That may require a separate action rather than being just simply being able to be incorporated into this.
So should it be to direct staff to return with? Language to that effect?
Yes, you know, direct staff. To. You know, yeah, to allow. you know, yeah, to allow.
It would be eighty five feet for a hotel. You don't have to have the for housing or the ground floor retail. Just be eighty five feet for hotel development. And eighty five feet and four point O FAR.
Up to eighty five feet.
Up to.
Yep.
Does that capture it?
And then there would also be and to allow hotel on RM zones within the focus area.
Okay. And Director Lay, do you think it would be if we're saying for you guys to come back? Should we say for you to propose certain RM zones and that could be all of, all of them? Or upon further consideration, a subset of them? Would that be a better approach?
I, I think it would only have applicability on the one property. I, I don't think we need to specify that.
So the clerk, it's, it's RM as in mother. And also on number three, encroachments is misspelled there.
And I, I don't know that the four point O is the correct number.
Okay.
We, because it still needs to be a housing development project and we're allowing up to four point O for the totality, including residential. We currently allow two point O for hotel overlay zones. Would that be acceptable if that?
Oh, so it would be a combination of hotel and housing with two point O hotel.
Yeah, I only think you can get to two point O FAR. I, I think the project anticipates one point O FAR. I don't think you could even get to, you could get to
I'm, I'm, you're thinking about a specific project and I'm thinking about the zone.
And and for the housing focus area, you would want to allow hotels throughout that housing focus area. Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I just think the
I want to give you enough latitude and for us to speed this up right now.
Sure, understood.
So so we can drop the and up to four point O FAR. And direct staff to allow for provisions for eighty five percent, eighty five foot hotel development.
And increased, and increased FAR.
And for staff to recommend increased FAR.
And I think we want of up to eighty five feet. That was up to, was meant to modify eighty five the whole time.
Yeah, right.
One last question.
That's in five, my head.
Jonathan, did Ms. Eisenberg talk about SEQA and said that we didn't have SEQA? Was there, is there some SEQA problem?
We don't, not with these recommendations, not with the changes that you have here. And with the scope of the work that we've, we've done. It's when we get to
The problem is if all tier two got included, that was a SEQA trigger.
Okay.
And Ms. Iceberg, I just want to make sure you're the closest one to this. Does the motion capture all of the issues that you've heard? And is there a comment about other nonresidential limitations that needs to be addressed?
So it's just another way to rephrase number five. The way the draft ordinance is written, it limits nonresidential uses to the fifty foot height limit and the FAR limit from the base district. If you don't want to limit hotel or retail development.
And a five and you'll return with specific proposals.
Councilmember Luthcott-Hames?
If I may just say, I think it was supposed to be and direct staff to propose increase to FAR. Oh, I'm sorry, we already have it at the front end. I'm sorry. I withdraw that. Yes.
Councilmember Rectal?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero two. Councilmember Vinker and Lou recused.
Excellent. Once again, thanks to the planning staff. Ex inclusive of everyone that worked on it. And we are now adjourned.